Again, welcome. Thanks for being here. I called this special meeting because we have a number of issues that we need to discuss and work through and get votes on. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Defoea, Councilmember Yeoman, Councilmember Saxton, and Councilmember Paul.
Jan, she's walking in.
And she's on her way in.
Yep.
That'll be a good thing. Okay. I'm gonna wait for her to basically be seated and then we'll get Jason into the first action item.
That looks like her. Hopefully.
I didn't see.
Tell me.
Did you see her?
Somebody guys this her.
Want me to go check?
Yeah.
Looks like they're walking right now, Jan.
Hey, Jan.
Glad you said that because I thought we had to get started.
I thought it looked like her walking in.
Welcome. Okay. We got a full quorum. It's good to have you here again. Jason, we'll turn it over to you for action item number eight, please.
Okay. So Ross came up and saw me and said that we needed to get this agreement done tonight, especially where we're not going to be meeting until November 20th. So he asked if we could hurry and put it on. So I had Morgan put it on. So if Ross wants to just hit it real quick, talk about it, and then we can be done with it.
Down on 4300 West coming out of Russell Park, we have a ditch that comes out of the park and goes down to the slough. So we put advertising in the paper for bids. We had, on the 18th, we had eight people bid on this project. The price is coming in between $194,159 and $224,197. And Leon Polson being a little bit, I just come to ask you to approve that project for that. More than half the money will come out of the groundwater impact that I have to spend by January or anything. So I can approve that project.
What are we doing on the canal, Ross? Looks like we're, are we, what are we doing on the canal?
The canal? That's what I'm doing. We're piping this ditch.
Oh, we're piping it? Oh, perfect.
All the way to the slough.
Perfect.
And then we're gonna try to tie it into Hopeur's trail down there, and then we'll pave that next spring and bring it up to the park.
Oh, good.
So people can jump across that.
Okay.
Kids right now are jumping that ditch.
Well, I was, they're what?
Jumping over that ditch and into there. And we're actually using the fences on those houses and all of that.
Okay. Counsel, questions for Ross relative to this contract?
What do you need, a motion to?
You need a motion?
Make a motion, we proceed with the contract for the agreement between Roy City and Leon Polson Construction Company Incorporated for the ditch at M. Russell Park.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second, Deb.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Shouldn't that be a roll call worth money or not?
No, this one's not an ordinance or resolution.
I'm good.
Okay. Counsel, with that, we have a couple of presentations. UDOT is downstairs right now, basically set up to provide a UDOT presentation dealing with transportation plan. We also have a discussion that's gonna take place by Andy and a salary survey discussion all set up downstairs. So we're going to excuse this meeting from this location and go downstairs to the conference room. Please join us. It is a public meeting. You're welcome to be there.
And 56th to 55th South. And a lot of this is being driven because this right now is the point of interest for UDOT. There's plans to do some widening there and a complete reconstruct and recirculation plan for the 56 I-15 interchange. And so as part of that, we have an opportunity to say, well, what is Roy's vision for this cross-section? What do we want this to look like? So that way we can give the input. Otherwise, we traditionally will get more of a standard UDOT road. And if that's what we want, we can always have that. But if we wanted something a little bit different, now is our opportunity to kind of go in and say, we have a master plan that we've adopted, and this is what we want that road to look like, and then help influence that role. So this gives you an idea. The legend just kind of identifies the classification of road. And really, a classification of road is arterials or some combination, collectors, then local streets. And as we move down, that's where we want the traffic to be, is on the big roads. Collector streets kind of, you know, gather the traffic from the neighborhoods to take them to the arterials, but we really don't want our local streets to carry that much traffic. The confusion we run into is a lot of people think that, well, if there's a driveway, it must be a residential street. Unfortunately, that's not how it is. Really, the streets are a function of their speeds, how much traffic they carry, and how they just work within the city. What are they doing? How are they functioning? So you can tell me it's a residential street, but if it's carrying 8,000 cars a day and 30 miles an hour and, you know, servicing multiple neighborhoods and connecting arterials, then it's functioning as a collector street. So that's this first one, kind of just gives you an idea of the different classifications here. Questions? I'll let you just jump in.
The data, in terms of traffic, where does that come from? You've got sensors out there, but what's the time period?
So this represents the average annual daily traffic. The latest numbers that we have are from 2015. And what that comes from is, UDOT does something called Traffic on Utah Highways, which they go out, if they don't have an actual sensor, they go out and measure their roads every three-year interval, and then they'll do seasonal adjustments based on what time of year that they measured it, and then adjust it based on growth in the area if, oh, I measured it in 2013 and I want a 2015 number. They do the same thing on the FAR routes, because a lot of your straits are federal aid routes, so you get Class B and C money for maintenance, and so they also have to do those. And so we're able to track that, and they do that every year. Unfortunately, it's just a lag on what. So I think technically, we have 2015. We probably can get 2016 data, but that's the lag. Sometime next May, we can get 2017 data.
I do have a question. So, I mean, there's tons of residential roadway, but some of them are marked in the pale color. Is there a reason why just select ones? Are those the higher-traffic areas?
These were ones where we had some traffic calming concerns, so we did a little bit of analysis on those individual streets and took a look at those, because when we get to the traffic calming portion, those are the ones that we had. And what is interesting is that's what we've looked at now, as you get into, or as you take a look, or if you know your neighborhood's better as a council, then you basically go, hey, what about this one or that one? Because the idea is, if we start doing traffic calming, usually you want to have an official program, because everybody thinks everyone's speeding on their street. And if there is a speeding problem, usually it's only if it's about five miles, the 85th percentile is more than five miles above the speed limit, that we would say you really have a speeding problem. And what's so interesting is normally, when you get into these neighborhoods, the speeding problem is the people that live in the neighborhood.
So you said if five miles an hour is over the 85th percentile, the percentile is where the problem starts?
Yeah. So we post speeds typically based on an 85th percentile, even though our residential streets are defaulted to 25 miles an hour usually. But if we went out there and saw that the 85th percentile was a 31 miles an hour, then we'd say, yeah, this might be someplace we want to look at. If it's 27, 28, technically, we wouldn't say that that probably has a problem. That doesn't mean you don't have the one person at 2:00 AM racing down it, but that's how we kind of set those speed limits. So this is an example, and what we did here is, this is just actual counts. So this represents AM and PM peak counts at these intersections.
Tell me how to read that, because I looked at that and I was like, ah.
How do you read? That's great.
It's quite like Hindu to me.
Job security. You guys follow me in, I'll interpret.
That's what I was like, I don't know what you're talking about.
So here we go. The way it is is, and it's a lot of information on one sheet, I agree. What it is, is you take a look and you say, intersection one. So this box represents intersection one. And we have northbound left, throes and rights, southbound lefts, throes and rights, and then you have the east and the west movements. So each movement here has been measured. And the way that's measured is, we typically take a look at the AM period from 7 to 9 and the PM period from 4 to 6. We count them in 15-minute intervals, and then the four that are concurrently the highest is our peak period. And that's what we normally use for evaluating. The reason you don't have everything out here is because this is a compilation. We weren't gonna charge you to go count a bunch of things. We did a lot of infill. So what's nice is, there have been a lot of traffic studies that have been done in the area, so that's why you see on the UDOT roads, there's a fair amount of counts. Those were data that was available that we could incorporate. Then there was a study specifically for 48th and 27th because of the rail crossing issues there with the signal. So we had some fresh counts there as well. And then we went out and supplemented where we had heard there were some potential problems. So that's why in the residential areas, you only see a couple, is because those were identified as problem areas specifically, or potential problem areas that we wanted to make sure we felt that we had fully taken a look at, both from a volume and a speed standpoint, because they were pointed out. And that's where we would look for input if you thought there were other locations that maybe aren't included as we go through and digest this. So anyway, that's what you have here, is just your volumes. And this is something that allows us to do an evaluation of, well, what kind of level of service are we having on these roads? Do we have ones that are failing? Even though they're UDOT roads, the main ones, it's still within your city. So as you get things, that's where you can work with UDOT on improvements if you think, well, this is the real intersection that's holding things up. Unfortunately, you're just gonna have, as the city of Roy, have to deal with a lot of pass-through traffic, because you've got somebody to the west that's still growing, you've got somebody to the northwest that's still growing. And so all that traffic until maybe Legacy Highway or Mountain View Corridor comes in is primarily passing through Roy in order to get to I-15. So that's just an evil of location. I don't know what you want to call it. So that's where, what we had is, we just wanted to provide that we have some data out there at some of our critical locations that we've taken a look at, but we've only supplemented it this far with kind of those other locations that came out as being the concern. Most of this data, like I say, we just had, we brought in from different studies so that we could incorporate it and have that available. So this one talks about what type of intersection control you have and what level of service. So level of service, sorry, I might be talking down to people that already are familiar, but as a bigger group, I try to give definitions as they go. Level of service is a rating of A through F. A is good, F's bad, just like a letter in school, but we don't expect everything to be an A. Typically, in an urbanized area, if we're a D during those peak times, that's why we measure the AM and PM counts and then we analyze those. If we're a D or better, then we're saying we're doing pretty good. And we wouldn't say, it's okay to have a little pain in the PMP, because that means the rest of the day, or the AMP. It means the rest of the day is even better. So that's the key thing. What we did here is, because of those intersections that we have the counts for, we were able to analyze and give you kind of how your intersections function. We did grayscale the ones that were considered UDOT intersections. So as you see, and it seems clearer in the picture than up here, but anyway, some of these that are gray scaled are UDOT ones. And that's where you'd go through and take a look and say, hey, I see some Fs here. Should we take a look at that and then maybe talk with UDOT about, what are we gonna do about those intersections? Or is there something, you know, different that we could do to improve those?
Okay. So what do you mean as far as, like, traffic flow? Is that what we're improving?
Yeah.
Through that intersection and through that place?
Yeah. So the top number's the AM level of service, the bottom number's the PM. That's what it is right now, based on the measures that we use to evaluate and give that letter grade to an intersection.
As far as traffic flow?
As far as traffic flow, yes. And that's a function of what's the average time it takes to get through that intersection.
Oh, okay.
Measured in seconds per vehicle.
Okay.
So an A means it's adequate for what's there?
A means it's working okay during that time period.
So is it B, C, or D, though, right?
Correct. So it's D or better. So A, B, C, D, we would consider a better.
So I'm looking at white number 20. What does that signify? Describe.
So number 20, that's a good one. The number 20, we counted our intersection, because this was the intersection of concern, but since we had the counts there, we went ahead and included it. This is the access where 57th hits 35th.
I'm very familiar with that.
Okay. So the problem is, is, the problem is with those, and that's why we typically try to do more that are controlled, is because right now, that's gonna come back as an A, because you've got 2,000 cars on 35th that aren't stopped at all. So they're an A. The side street is an F, because it's gotta wait for that gap in traffic, which may be 60, 70 seconds. But you have a lower one of volume, because the delay is a measure of weighted average. It's the overall intersection, not, well, yeah, but I can't make a left turn. So unfortunately, it's the overall intersection evaluation. And that's why, because otherwise, you know, you'd think, oh, well, let's put a traffic signal in there. Well, now you just stop 2,000 cars for two cars, type of thing. So your level of service would actually go down as an overall rating for those. Not to say that there's not times when you say, hey, I want to put a traffic signal in because the side street is more important, or the side street needs some priority compared to the main street. And we have a whole set of signal warrants that we usually use for things like that to determine. It's a function of spacing, volumes, side street delay. Like, for example, this is closer than UDOT would allow you to have a signal. But if we had 120 left turns, we could at least go and say we might meet, you know, in one hour, we could maybe go and say we meet the warrants for that.
Or could you, I mean, if that's a point of problem, could you go and say, maybe we're gonna go right-in, right-out only in there?
That would be the other thing, is you can restrict it. Normally, the right-in, right-out, so UDOT's policy is, every access is a right-in, right-out, unless, but we let you use it as a full motion until it doesn't work for whatever reason. Volumes, safety, so if they saw a lot of accidents, they have a right to go and put a median down there and restrict that to a right-in, right-out. They don't like to do that for city streets. They don't usually care as much about private access points. But city streets, they try to work with you and say, hey, guys, we're seeing this. We really think we need to do something about that. Now, this section of, and we'll get into kind of the widening or what's planned out there here, but like, right now, this is just a three-lane section, but there is plans to make it a five lane, just like Midland is up here and like 35th is down here. But anyway, so that's just what we have done. If there were specific intersections you want to look at, we can, but what we tried to do is not spend a lot of your money doing intersections that we didn't. We tried to, you know, use the information that we had and at least kind of give you an idea of what you can do. And then you can come back and say, I'm worried about this intersection or that intersection, and then we can supplement or add to.
Question. The table.
The table.
Table one shows.
What page are you talking?
I'm talking the road network classification.
So page two. Turn the hand up.
And if you look down, the roadway, 6,000 South, 3,500 West, and 1,900 West, you have And I look at that number, and it's the lowest number in the table, yet I drive that road that has a zero flowing along.
No. That's an excellent question. We can, but that's what's reported as the value on there. I know. And the problem is, is because 6,000, well, right now, 6,000 South is probably heavier in the peak times than what the daily traffic shows, because it's being used as a cut-through. 56 is plugged up, and so a lot of people are using it just as a cut-through in that peak time. So it seemed so busy then, but there are times you can go out there, you know, I won't say right now, because it's peak time, but there are times when you go out there and it's slower. But that's what's reported to the Federal Highway Administration based on that. Now, we can go back and take a look at our counts.
Doesn't that count?
Seems low.
Low.
I think the question goes back, is this 2015 or 2018?
It's 15. It's 2015.
That's three years ago.
I still won't hit that number. There's a lot of people that use that to come up to 19 in order to go south on 1,900.
Yeah. So that would be a place where we could, because what we have done is, we've counted intersections 18 and 15 here, and so we can go back. So what was reported in that, in this table, and that's why it says existing ADT, is what technically UDOT has reported to the federal government as what's on that road. I won't say they're 100% accurate, but that's the data we have, short of us going out there. We can lay some tubes or do some things to try to get a better or more reflective number. But again, that's the data that we have right now, but that's the kind of information I want. I want that feedback that says, is that passing the smell test, the gut check, whatever you want to call it? And then we could maybe have Public Works lay out some tubes there and get.
On $6.
Yeah. We already have those tubes, so we can take a look at that and, yeah, you actually sent me that stuff, too.
Joe, this might be a silly question to you, but why are we putting a 2018 plan on 2015 data?
That's the only data available, unfortunately. Like I said, there's a lag in the reported data. So short of us going out there with tubes and measuring everything physically ourselves, which we can do, it's just a lot of effort and costs money, this data is available based on what has been already reported. So that's why we start with that.
And I think in general, even the trends, we tend to trust. Obviously, we know there's gonna be some inflation to whatever these numbers are, but you can still identify the roads that are heavy and the roads that are less so. I mean, obviously, it's not 100% accurate, but it does identify the trend.
Well, but if you're gonna start work on 56, 6,000's only gonna grow in traffic.
Well, the intent is to limit that cut-through, because the idea is, we're adding capacity. The reason people are going down, they're running down 19th to 6,000 is because 56 is backed up. So when 56, during construction, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. You're right. You will see more cars on 6,000 during construction.
But when 56 is a five-lane road and it's flowing traffic and the interchange is all done, the idea is to take traffic off of 6,000 because 56 is done, right?
That's correct. So the pain, the pain of 56 being widened is just how, unfortunately, when it's construction.
Can you come to church with me someday?
That's my one.
Sunday school class. And explain this so that I don't have to.
I'll come.
Yeah, I'm, that's not all means.
Call the sack right here.
I'm teasing. Fred Ross, this is a tough room, isn't it?
Let me just make a comment.
Oh, yeah.
First thing is, is that, once the transportation plan's approved, then obviously, this becomes an important tool for Roy City, as we go down to the Wasatch Regional Council and we start jockeying with UDOT to figure out how we can be part of a broader plan to try to get, as we talked, widening to 5600 during that crucial time. Old data, three-year-old, four-year-old data, recognizing that's just how it is officially. The numbers probably don't speak to the necessity, that old data, as we're realizing today. And I share this with you, in large part because we just got out of a meeting in Leighton a couple of days ago, and given that conversation, Hillfield notified us, mayors and city staff, that they're expecting over the next few years, putting 3,500 more jobs on that base. And Roy being the only, basically, Weber County city that accommodates access. I mean, some actually come out of Weber County and drive into Querrefield if they can get through. But it's gonna put a lot more pressure on that interstate, particularly on 5600, is a lot of the, what we anticipate, 34% of those 3,500 more people actually find residence in Weber County, and more likely to the west. So we're starting to see what appears to be even a potential more congestion, as you stated. I think as we, and surely I will, because I'm gonna ask Ross if we can get some harder data, but as we go into the negotiation in the Transportation Committee, I need to make sure that we present the Roy case as accurate as it is, and it's growing. And I share that with you, because I think the next chart, you're gonna jump into what we predicted 2040 to look like. And the 2040 number, as you get to that, is what I think personally, we're probably at right now, in roughly 2019.
Well, this, so I'm just bringing this up real quick, because this is what UDOT has as a map that anybody can kind of use, but what you do is, you're able to look at a historic rate of what that traffic has been, according, again, to what they've reported to the feds. And so what you can see is, we think of, we think that it, you know, has grown significantly. There are jumps when you have big developments, but in general, it does this, but ultimately, it kind of goes like this. And so that's why we take a look. And Wasatch Front Regional Council is our main MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's what they're projecting. And so what we typically try to do is say, well, here's what it has been historically, assuming we believe that the measured data from UDOT or how they implemented it, here's where we're heading, what is the process in between? Because that's what they are trying to do, and it's unfortunately, it's a catch-up gate, because you're developing before usually the roads are in place.
I know.
And so that's where we get back to the pain, when you have to finally go, okay, it's bad enough, we need to widen the road. Well, we're just gonna make it worse when it's under construction. That's just unfortunate.
Brian, our last count on 6,031 was 9,000 cars a day.
And that was in last year, this year?
Last week.
Last week.
Two weeks ago.
So that's trouble.
Yeah.
It's charged.
And so that's something we'll supplement. The key thing was, for our map, what we were trying to do was just say, here's our base condition, because I really don't like to have maps that say, well, this road's 2015, this one's 2018, and this one's, but I understand what you're saying, is that we have a dynamic target that we're looking at. And that road is higher than what UDOT has historically reported. So something's happened. Was it Clinton? Was it Roy? Was it, 56 got so much worse that we decided, you know, that people decided that 6,000's a better cut-through?
Well, it is.
But it's still the lowest of any, you know? Maybe at 9,000.
Yeah. The reality has been that our residents have realized very quickly that using the city streets rather than the UDOT streets is much more efficient in getting kids to school. However, Dave, 4,800 is just a traffic jam, and the numbers are reflecting that.
We did a count on 4,800 just by the high school just this week.
This past week.
16,000 in a 24-hour period.
Lot more than 6,000.
16,000.
I know, a lot more.
But that's at the high school, right? And we have a 2015 number, 13,7. So you are seeing.
Joe, I got a question, not with the mayor's comment. I mean, it's a competition when you have these, you go, your cities.
For money, you mean?
For the money.
Yes. It is.
Our neighbor cities to the south, Sunset's gonna get a new interchange there, Querrefield's gonna be the same thing. We're competing against each other. How detrimental is it if we show up with 15 numbers and they show up with 19, 20 numbers?
Well, when you fill it out, you grow these numbers, and so when we have data, we would use the numbers plus a projected number, which you have to use Wasatch Front's numbers, because in those applications to Wasatch Front, it's a standard form you have to fill out when you fill those out. It's not like a blank proposal that you make. There's, you know, you go to the Oats Committee or Down and Salt like it's a Slats Committee, but that's where basically they go through and you're making your case. They all kind of come together and prioritize that, but Wasatch Front comes up with a recommended list based on that form, delay reduction, things like that. And so you've done a little analysis to come up. Interchanges aren't done that way. Interchanges are, we're talking about spot intersections with Wasatch Front, or roadway widenings, or intersections, or roundabouts, or things like that. But interchanges, that's not Wasatch Front money. That's typically on a bigger scale, and that comes straight from the legislature and the interstate.
Basically, the question, answers to questions, is it detrimental for us to have all numbers?
No, because this.
That's what we want.
No, because we've identified what the numbers are. No, because we've identified what the numbers are. And when you apply for money, you go and get the new number for the specific area that you're asking for.
So we, yes, so we can take those numbers that Ross has just been toeing and then we can plug them in to this information that we have here.
Yeah. This is a basis to say you care about, you care about it. 2015 allowed us to put a map with the most numbers on it, essentially what you're seeing there, because we can take that off and say, let's give you 2018 numbers and you'll have three data points up there because that's unfortunately what data that we have probably. And so that wasn't, it wasn't to try to shortchange you at all. Because when you fill out those applications for Wasatch Front, you're gonna go specifically, you're gonna go do fresh counts, you're gonna go, you know, get what those are, you're gonna do the analysis, you're gonna say what the Wasatch Front says. So this is meant to be a guideline for you and to say what you're doing. This isn't meant to supersede your applications for funds at all, and it doesn't hurt you. We do these master plans all the time, and this is what we start with, is a base map where we said, this was the best we could get as a starting point, so that's why we call it 2015. And then we move forward with the projections.
So it's just the baseline.
It's just the baseline. That's just the baseline. Because like I say, we, I mean, in theory, I don't think I want to do this, but in theory, you could have like, oh, here's a 2,000, we have some data from 2017. We have 2018 right here. But once you start mixing those numbers, it's, you're chasing...
Get a model, yeah, yeah, get a model.
Here's the real, here's the real issue. The issue is, is that, and I'll give you a perfect example. Under the, under the transportation plan that was presented by UDOT, which Ross at Front put together, the 2015 to 2030, I think, timeline, it basically said that 5600 was scheduled to be actually widened by 2028. And that's the old document. I just went through a briefing recently that the proposed one shows it now slipping into the Phase 2 of the 20, better word, 2020 to 2040. So good chance it will not see any life, more than likely, until probably in the late 30s or middle 30s because it's Phase 2. Some of the other ones, which I was somewhat surprised they're proposing, they propose they're gonna actually move like that interchange of I-15 and 56. And that one too, that went into Phase 1, and that interchange actually went into Phase 1. So the challenge is...
They can get funding for that interchange right now.
Yeah.
Not to wind the road, but they got money for the interchange.
So you see where the numbers play an important process, because in my opinion, where we may have anticipated a widening plan by 2028, I'm betting with the new plan that's being considered right now, which is a 2040...
The 2040 plan, yeah.
It's probably gonna get slipped in the second phase, which will push it into the late 30s easy. So, and of course, here's the challenge, and I think it really comes down to this. Wasatch Front, maybe you do in a UDOT role, but Wasatch Front doesn't take the heat from the residents who claim a lot about the traffic issues in 5600. But the elective people do.
Sure.
And the city does. And our challenge would be is we can't fix what we don't own, and we don't own 5600.
Right.
Now, so obviously, if we can put the right numbers in the right hands that are accurate, we might be able to go ahead and say, we do have a serious issue, which we believe we do, and try to get those dollars accelerated, okay, if nothing better than 2028. My fear now is because it got slipped back, it's going to be 2030, which means we live with this problem for a long, long time.
So right now, they're working on the 2050 plan because they typically have three phases in 10-year intervals. So Phase 1 is 2020 to 2030. They try not to lock it in, you know, for a year. And then each time they do these 10-year updates, they rejuggle them based on priorities. And so the concern you have is right now it's in Phase 1, but it's going to Phase 2? So they're pushing this past 2030?
It is, yeah.
Because, and maybe Joey can help with this, because we've been working with a UDOT project manager...
Well, and I think that's the others, even, and Ross and I were talking to Chris Peterson briefly about it from UDOT, and the conversation is, hey, there's an environmental assessment going on right now. That environmental assessment will lend itself to, that will kind of dictate how fast a lot of these things take place. And in, typically in those environmental assessments, there are some updated counts and some assessments there.
There will be, for sure.
To make sure that there is the most recent data there. And so they are in the process of evaluating this, evaluating alternatives. And really, even Chris Peterson's response was, hey, if this is pressing, and we determine that through the environmental assessment, then it doesn't, I mean, this will get bumped to Phase 1, no problem. I mean, that's kind of where they look at it.
The fact that it's under an environmental assessment...
That's interesting, because that's not the impression he gives the mayor at that same meeting. We were in that meeting.
And he just kind of said, I'm not so worried about what phase it's in because when we determine it needs to get done, it gets done.
So that's what's interesting is, is the phases are done on 10-year plans and Wasatch Front does it. And typically, the Wasatch Front money, even though UDOT and UTA can go after it, the intent of the MPO money is to help cities that don't have a lot of money for these expensive projects. When it's a state route, it's a little bit differently done because each region kind of lobbies for what's their important corridors. And lots of times, it goes straight to the legislature. And so it can be in a Phase 3 and you can see it. But if they start an EA and they're putting money into an EA, which those can take a couple of years anyway, that means they're serious about doing something. They don't just do EAs unless they think they want to do something. And the EA has a shelf life because it's a deeper process. And so that's why I say is, is if, because that was my understanding, is they were getting ready to do an EA, which doesn't usually mean, yeah, we're thinking about doing something in 15 years.
Oh, I know.
That's why I, that's kind of, I'm getting mixed signals here.
Well, I got through, I went to the regional discussion. I looked at their plan. This is the proposed 2020 to 2040 plan. Our plan moved on 5600 moves to Phase 2, and you know what that means? That's the 2030 to 2040 phase. And so it slipped back from the 2020, and I got the documents.
No, no, that'd be interesting because the question I usually do is I compare the 20, so if you're on the 2050 draft plan and we have 2040, it's like, what moved up? Right? I mean, the fact that you're in a phase is good because again, and especially on UDOT facilities, they change. Because the funding that the plan really supports is normally the MPO funding. And that MPO funding tends to go by phases because then you gotta get on the five-year STIP plan, right? And then the funds come eventually. So it's much more scheduled out. Whereas UDOT, can, they adjust their five-year plan every year and decide what they want to do. And then you have legislative actions that take place where they just say, thou shall be done, and it gets done, right?
I will indicate to you, Joe and I were sitting with Chris Peterson, looking at the chart. And he basically made a profound statement. He says, I like your, because we pushed it, we asked to push it in Phase 1. And I will tell you, and he looked at me in the face and he says, Mayor, he says, we gotta, which means we gotta take something back. So tell me which road we're gonna move back. And honestly, I pointed to 1800 in Clearfield or Sunset. I said, well, gee, that's in Davis County. I don't care if you move that back.
Well, that's when he quantified it. He says, we already have the money for that interchange. So we're going after that first.
Right. Because that was legislated money to, and the thing is, is if they know they're gonna do 1800, I think this is why it's logical from a, not from Weber County or for Roy, but from a transportation standpoint, is the intent is that's an interchange in between two interchanges. 650 is pretty congested, 56 is pretty congested. We're gonna add one. Does it provide some relief to those other two interchanges? So if we're gonna do that anyway, the whole question of pain of 6,000 when 56 goes under, logically, it makes sense to build that interchange as an alternate route before we start tearing up the other ones too. So I guess what I'm saying is, is from a global thing, transportation-wise, that makes sense why they would go after and do that one first, because you like to have the alternative routes. Best thing we ever did was build light rail when we tore up I-15. And yeah, light rail was a great success down there in Salt Lake County because you had that alternate. And so I think that makes sense why, but I know what your concern is. And so I think the thing is continuing that conversation with UDOT of what's the real thing?
Keep your foot on the throttle. Joe, I got a question on, how does legacy of highway completion affect this? Are they gonna say, well, that's gonna ease your east-west traffic, so you guys are not gonna be pushed back again?
It's a great question. I mean, the whole point is these big ones, the freeway interchanges, the legacy highways, are legislative, legislative driven. It's not like Chris is saying, no, I want to prioritize this over this. But no, the east-west connectivity, you still have to maintain, but it comes from a different set of money typically. The 56 south money will come more from their general money that they do things, whereas the interchanges and legacy come from legislative money where they throw additional. Because I guarantee you, Carlos is up there going, we have no money to build this. Unless you're gonna give us special money for this, this is not in our plan type of thing. Because to build those things, you know, you're in billions type of thing. And that interchange at 18 is gonna be 40, 45 million dollars type of thing. So those are typically spot legislative things. Does that help or...
Agreed. I just, I was just told, to be honest with you, they said, and I think it was a candid conversation when I was in Salt Lake on a Transportation Committee with Wasatch Front. And they simply said that we're gonna stop it at 1800. I'm not sure it's gonna get that far, but we'll stop it at 1800. And the reason why it's not going north into Weber County in large part because the population up there doesn't support it. So if you're looking for legacy piece, it just isn't the population numbers. It will come, but they don't believe it's there yet. And I, of course, I also heard some people say that Davis County will be built out in two years. And so they got a pretty healthy, you know, group of housing programs down there, so.
Yeah, I think they just, they got beat up pretty good on the Glover Lane versus the, you know, what the alignment was type of thing. But it makes sense to continue forward because the only reason, well, I think of like Mountain View Corridor down in Salt Lake County, the only reason they started in the south, it's not what would have been the best for traffic, but they had some land given to them. So it made sense to build where you had, you know, if you, if you build this part first, we'll give you the land type of thing. And so, you know, they're also trying to do the things. But from a, you know, traffic perspective, it would have been better to build north-south. Well, up here, it's better to build south-north and just continue that up here. So I'm not sure the timing of legacy. I think that's out a little ways for out here. And that's where I think you have more push than to say, well, then we gotta get 56 done sooner than later.
That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying.
Stay in front of Chris, stay in front of the Transportation Commission. Get your legislators to kind of help out and say, what have you done for Weber County lately?
Buckston, he's on the, he's the chairman of that committee, so you're right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's starting to get above my, I can tell you the process, but yeah.
We're talking to him.
I can't make a phone call and go, star 56 tomorrow. What do you guys think? But the fact that they are starting an EA is extremely positive because normally, that means they want to do something because, and then they'll start pushing for more money and things like that.
And Joe, the EA that's being started on 56?
Yeah, it's going, I mean, they started, we had a meeting with them last Tuesday, and there's discussions about cross-section and things like that.
That's why this was kind of important to get going on too, is because it helps them define a non-standard UDOT cross-section if that's what we want to do, because it's in an adopted city master plan. Because otherwise, they don't like to do something different. They default to their standard. Sidewalk, curb, gutter, shoulder, five lanes of traffic, shoot, there you go.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, no, that's what I wanted today. And like you say, I take as much time as you want to give me.
It's kind of why you have to do this in a work session instead of during the council meetings.
So the next thing is we take a look at the 2040 Wasatch Front projection. So if you compare that first map to this figure, which is figure four or five? What do we have? Yeah, we are at five. This kind of goes, what are those roads projected to carry? Again, this comes straight from Wasatch Front Regional Council. They have this high-level model. It takes into account your land uses, the surrounding city land uses, you know, in terms of zoning, what they're proposing, and tries to come up with that overall global 30,000-foot projection of things. And this is purely from Wasatch Front. So we haven't supplemented this. This is the roads that have projected numbers in the 2040 plan. So 6,000 doesn't have a number. So that's where we'd have to kind of get a little more refined and kind of come up with our number based on what we think is gonna happen there, and that's usually a function of land use. In theory, we get rid of that cut-through traffic. And then it's kind of easier to project that traffic because we could say, well, how many homes is this serving? Why would someone come from over here in Clinton and use 6,000 versus 56? Because the intent is 56 is a higher-speed road. That's always a function of travel time and some modeling efforts that we put into those things. What you see is we're jumping up here on 56 to 34,000. The nice thing about this is each of these roads then, based on the projections, we can say approximately what size road you need to be. Is that a three-lane road, which is one lane in each direction, a center turn lane? Or is that a five-lane road, two lanes in each direction and a center turn lane? And that is, those roads just have a certain capacity that they can handle. And again, it's, that capacity or that level is a function of A through F, right? Capacity is that threshold between E and F. We haven't failed, but we probably can't move much cars. So for example, this, this 5600 south, if it was built as a five-lane road with a shoulder, that has a capacity of about 39,000 cars a day. So if we're at the 31 and 34 that Wasatch Front projected, that five-lane road should handle that. As opposed to right now, if we go back and we are at, sorry, need these. And you go back and you take a look here at our existing traffic, we're at 24,000 right here. And this comes across as five lanes, but necks down really quickly. You're at 24,000 cars. A three-lane road has a capacity of about 16,500. So we're pretty past capacity. So what do we see here? Lots of congestion. And that's what we see. And that's why we think that some of the cars and what you've seen the increase, because you're right, we've almost doubled in three years, is because they found that this is the path of least resistance. And cars are a lot like water. They don't always run downhill, but they will take the path of least resistance. So that's what this map kind of shows, is what their plan, what their, now, the plans are, what are we gonna do for our streets versus the other streets in terms of a classification? Because again, I think it started off by saying classification is usually a function of speed, volume on the road, and then how is it being used by the traffic? Is it connecting communities? Is it connecting neighborhoods? Is it just for the 100 people that live on that street type of thing?
And are we having a speed issue? Because on some of the roads, we were having speeding issues, but it really isn't a residential road and the speed limit shouldn't be 25 miles an hour. It should really technically be 30 miles an hour.
And I have a figure coming up where we've done several speed locations, because it's pretty easy to do a speed evaluation statistically and then identify. And that's where we go back and say, well, how's it being used? The fact that we said add driveways and put 25 out there doesn't necessarily mean it's a residential street. We can call it that, but the reality is it may still continue to be utilized as a collector street. And typically, our hierarchy is residential streets are 25, collectors are 30 and 35, and then arterials get up into the 40, 45s type of thing. Okay, so where was I going with this? Oh, in terms of a classification, you can kind of see that our major arterials are obviously the UDOT roads. Right now, there's not really any plans to widen 19th West. You have a five-lane section up here, comes down. There's a short section here that's actually a seven-lane section between Riverdale Road and 56. And that's just a function of tight signal spacing, lots of turn lanes. And so we have that oversized road where essentially they've just used the shoulders as an extra lane. And you, oh, you have that opportunity at other parts where you have the full shoulders. And you'll never get UDOT to admit to it, but that's a nice flexibility they have. Because when they build the road, it's five lanes and shoulders for disabled vehicles. But lots of times, that becomes your outside lane if you need to. Or when you get to intersections, you can have right turn lanes, things like that. Midland right now, or Hinckley's a five-lane, Midland, three-lane up here. But I don't think, because with the Hinckley connection, they're probably not planning to do much of anything up there. Keep it as a three-liner. The five-lane comes down to approximately here-ish? And then that's where they kind of stop that project. The goal is all of this is gonna be a five-lane. So this piece up here is what the plan is for the rest of Midland and 35th West to look like.
And that's the main road coming in from Clinton, right, 2,000?
Yes, that'd be, yeah, that's...
But right now, it's stopped.
Unfortunately, right here at the county line, the road designation changes because Davis County has a different coordinate system than Weber County. But yeah, that's 2,000, what's that, Wincott right here on the corner? That helps with 6,000 and 35th, and then heads on down. But that's the primary UDOT road on the west side, to be honest, of both counties.
Do we know when that's supposed to be continued?
We can look that up. Normally though, once they start a road, they like to. So I wouldn't, I would think it is in the five-year...
It was, it was in Phase 1, which is now to 2030. They were thinking somewhere around 20, 25.
That far out, really? Okay. Because I know the EIS was done for that, this section. It was done for this piece, but they, for some reason, this piece got done and then they leapfrogged down here because they went from antelope up type of thing. And so this is the piece in the middle that needs to be finished. That seems like a long ways out though, to me. But I don't know. Like I say, Chris and the Transportation Commission tend to have a better handle on exactly the timing. Because you're right, the Wasatch Front thing will say Phase 1, and it's like, okay, that's between now and 2030.
Yeah, we were, we were talking to Chris. He was thinking it was probably gonna be somewhere around 20, 25.
Okay, so he does think it's, so they're gonna have to update the EA then, or the EIS probably. This probably wasn't an EA, that was probably an EIS, but...
But they're gonna stop at 18. There's no funding or plan to take it beyond 18.
18 north?
1800 north.
I think somebody said that's in Davis County?
That's for after Walmart, right?
Yes, that's correct. And the reason they would go down there is because with the new interchange, that would be a nice connection for them to have kind of 18, the interchange over here, back up here. Now they have a, and this goes over to 31st, so now they have a completed loop in terms of capacity that way. So that makes sense as a logical, logical point for them. Okay, so that's 19th West. Riverdale's been improved as much as it's gonna be. We talked about Midland and 35th. 56 is the one we're really talking about, which is going from the, most of it's three-lane to the five-lane section all the way through Roy, which is gonna require right-of-way takings, which I'm sure everybody's aware of. So they're doing some houses and things that are gonna go away. But that's what they're doing right now as part of the EA, is looking at what's the best alignment? What's the minimal impact to the community? But I guess that's just the reality is you widen a road when you got this much room and houses here, something's gotta give, so. Okay, and then right now, the rest of it would be a function of looking at the city streets. So that's the UDOT, those are the UDOT roads. The next step would be taking a look at our streets and saying, do we have any appetite for widening? From a planning standpoint, our roads are getting to the point, particularly 48, where it really should be, again, from a transportation planning standpoint, I'd say that number exceeds the three-lane and you should have a five-lane. But that's, that's a change of character. And so a lot of cities, I just put, throw this out there, even though that's the official thresholds, a lot of cities are saying, you know, that's gonna change my community too much. Am I okay having that congestion that I see? And do I feel like people will find another way in and out type of thing? With the increase of this capacity, do I get some relief from these other streets type of thing? Like, are people using 48 because 56 is so bad, just like they're using 60th? And do I get some relief if 56 gets moved up or gets, you know, improved, I should say?
Well, I think, I think in all fairness, the hard conversation I've had with people on this is that they're saying is first, 5600 has a bridge over the tracks. And we've got too many complaints about cars being stuck and basically waiting for a train to get through. And they stop on that track. Second is, is that it's the only bridge that Roy has, even Hinckley basically is in West Haven. Third is, is that it's direct access to I-15, it's direct access to Hillary Forest Base. And oh, by the way, it's direct... And oh, by the way, it's direct access to the shopping centers in Riverdale. They're, they're not going to go down 1800 and come back upon 1900 and get to Riverdale. They're not going to go on Hinckley to get over to Riverdale. They're going to basically take 5,600 or any of the city's other streets to get them up on that 1900 corridor. So we see us being in the middle of a rather large expansion that is happening with West Haven. They've talked hundreds and hundreds of homes and townhouses they're planning. Hooper is resisting that, but they're not too far behind. And Roy's, in essence, streets are right in the middle of what we see as the transportation link. And in our challenge, and Ross can speak to this better than I can, if they can't get on a UDOT road, they're taking city roads, and our city roads are taking a beating, which means we have to pay to have those things repaired.
And that's kind of where the thing, because this increase between what we have, whatever the number is and what they're projecting here, you know, and that involves adjustment. A lot of that increase is not Roy traffic. It's pass-through traffic. And so that's where you have to decide what you want to do. You have options of do nothing and just say, hey, it's part of traffic, and we think it's going to get bad enough, people will go somewhere else. But then that affects your residents, right? You have options of, well, we could do what Riverdale did and shut, rid a road and make it one-way at the end there. And so people can only go one-way in that section. You can do, you know, these are a little far apart, but you could do some kind of one-way couplet. You have a three-lane road that's one lane in each direction for turn lanes. In bigger cities, we'd say, well, let's have two one-way roads. It's three lanes in each direction. We have tons of capacity, right? And you have that, you know, that connection here with Midland or something. And you would do that like with 40th and 48th or something. But again, now, you're still going to have intrusion of traffic into the neighborhood, probably not from the commuters as much as from the Roy residents, because they're like, I don't want to go all the way down and turn around. I'm going to wind through the neighborhood. And then there's the argument that, yeah, that's what the roads are for, though. If you live in that area and you want to wind through the neighborhood to get to your house, then wind through the neighborhood. So you have, you have unfortunately lots of different things, and there's not a real good fix. So that's why I say is some of this has been left as, what do we want the feel of our city to be? Before, I'd just say 19,000, oh, you need a five-lane road. You probably want to think, is that what we really want to do, you know, for that? Because that's why I say is there are some cities, we're working with, New Mill Creek just incorporated. And so we're working with that city, and some of the things they're saying is, you know what? We're okay with congestion for an hour a day in the morning or the evening or something like that, because we don't want to widen our road. We want, we actually want to put a road diet in and get bike lanes. And so we're willing to put up with the pain of that. And so that's kind of more of a different philosophy. So that's why I hate, I don't want to be the one that dictates what you should do. I will give you the information, so you guys can make the decision. And that's really what I want to be, is your tool of, tell me those questions you have, and I'll, I'll give you the good, the bad, and the ugly of it. But that's why we don't see things like, we still see this as a minor collector roadway, even though it's at 19,000. We haven't jumped up and said, you should make this an arterial, which is a five-lane road. Now, we have different options, and the cross-sections that Wasatch Civil's put together gives us options because it's all about side treatment. You can fit, you know, if you have an 80-foot right-of-way, you can fit a five-lane road. If you want shoulders and bike lanes and park strip, that's not going to fit in an 80-foot right-of-way. And so you kind of have to balance what you want and what is our vision of that. Okay, if that's your vision, here's what it's going to cost you versus, you know, in terms of, of impact to the road. Does a five-lane road by your high school something that you want? All those things are something that, that's why we just start the conversation. We don't have the conclusions here tonight. But that helps you think about the questions, maybe. Okay, so, maybe it is a three-hour thing. Sorry about that. So the next map here is the Build Out Classification map. And that's where what we did is we did go through and take a look and make a recommendation on how the existing classification map and maybe how you may want to consider the changes to those, to some of those classifications was. And now what we've done is we've taken, so, let's see, let me back up, apologize. So what we tried to do is overlay the new classification on the old classification in terms of if we were going to make a change, so that you see that. And some of the things that you see is, right now, 31st West is really considered residential street. And this is a good example. It's not functioning as a residential street. People are using it as a collector street. They're running up from, you know, all the way south on 31st into Clinton, actually, all the way up and hitting Midland type of thing. You have traffic signals on there. We're proposing a new signal at 31st and 56 when they, when they do the widening. And then you also have, right now, we're thinking aroundabout at 31st and 60th, actually, would be a positive thing at that. Because you do have some speeding issues along there. Roundabouts tend to help you slow things down as well. But there's things that, as we get into the different traffic control or intersections that we think we need, you also, we're also looking at the classifications of those roads. And some of the roads are just called residential that are functioning as collectors. So that's the map that you can kind of take a look at and see, you know, what we have. You can compare this to the prior map and see what, what were those streets called before versus what we're recommending now. But again, we don't have huge upsizing where we're trying to say you should. 40th and 48, to be honest, like 31st or north-south, 31st and 43rd West, they're collector streets, even though they're not officially classified, so we're just officially classifying them. Telling you, they're probably more like 30 mile-an-hour roads than 25 based on our speed studies. 48th and 40th are really the route you have to think about because right now, their volumes are going to be at the point where you probably would say those should be upsized if you want that level, that magic level of service to function. But that is definitely going to change the character of the road and, and whether or not you, you want that. So this is one you can digest because it's got lots of information in terms of existing roundabouts and signals and, and future roundabout signals. Or we have a combo one where it could go either way. And it's really, you know, how do you feel? I personally think those collector-collector connectors are great as, you know, if they're going to be single-lane roundabouts as opposed to traffic signals. But when you get into the multi-lane, that's where you start thinking like, you know, where 56 comes in. Or once, if we know 56 is going to a five-lane road, we're not going to probably drop a two-lane roundabout there at 31st, right? We're not quite European enough that way.
Joe, and on that too, when we were driving the city, maybe it's a good idea to let some of the council know, on 6,000 South and 3,100 West, that's been an intersection that's kind of been problematic as far as crashes, is making that a true roundabout where people can use that as a roundabout, not a four-way. And if you just go south of that in Clinton, that's a big roundabout.
Yeah, so that's what we're showing right now on 6,000 and 31st is a, is a roundabout because it's also a traffic calming device, and we're seeing some speeding there. So because that's, we think there's an opportunity, if, if you're liking the roundabouts that you have and you think they're functioning well, we think that's a good opportunity for one. And same with 43rd West, we kind of are looking at the 43rd West corridor's potentials there as well. Because, like I say, it's just how you feel. You could go either way. But it's going to need some kind of additional traffic control than just the stop sign, the two-way stops that they are seeing right now.
It slows David's people.
Exactly. Well, it slows everybody, hopefully, if they're designed right.
No, I mean, they're speedy.
We actually put in for, for 3,100 and 6,000,
Okay.
500,000 for-
Good.
Two years from now. But we're going to get it, but we put-
But we put that in, okay.
Joe, I got a question for you.
Sure.
5200, okay, doesn't go all the way through. We kind of talked about it before.
27 or 31st, or what are you thinking?
52, 27.
Okay.
Instead of doing overpass, do an underpass like they have at Sunset and Clinton. Where it's just a city street that goes under. Would that help or hinder what we're trying to do?
So we're talking about right here at 52 and 27. You're thinking of going under-
Yep.
-the tracks and then connecting here?
Mm-hmm.
Because you're fighting grade. If you went over, I don't know that you ever touched down here because we're-
Whatever, whatever's cheapest. Would it help or hinder?
So it provides connectivity. The question really is, then, if you connect it here.
Does it overwhelm the rest of the road?
Yeah, that's what I think is, okay, if I put it here, what I'm saying is I want to, I want to draw traffic to it. Because now I have another east-west connector. So I'm going to tie it in here to this street, and I want to run that out here. Where I think you're going to run into problems is, okay, well, that's going to be a problem because this needs to somehow shift down to 53rd, where it ties into Riverdale. Isn't that 53rd where it hits?
52.
Yeah, you're close.
Someone write it.
You're close to a light there.
Yeah, because the Riverdale Road has a state, they have, I thought it was 53rd that takes off to the, to the west here. Because it's a four-way intersection. So you're going to, you're going to run into trouble by loading traffic here. This will then basically become a collector street, is what, is what you would be doing by doing that. The value to it is, where do I draw? Because essentially, usually, since it, it ends over here type of thing, the question is, where am I drawing from it? Because normally, if this doesn't connect here, you could, you could put another signal here and, what are you trying to do? Sorry.
That's the question.
What, what would it do?
Does it help or does it not?
Yeah, does it relieve any of the congestion?
If you leave this as a three-lane, and people say, this is so congested, just like 56 is so bad, people are going to 6,000, then you're going to draw people over here that are probably from this area, that are saying, I don't want to run up 48, and maybe I don't want to run up 56, but I'm going to run up this way because I'm either going up Riverdale Road or this is still on the path to get to the freeway. And so you'll create a new collector here, but that collector would have to do something different here because I don't think you're going to get a signal there. And I don't think it'd be good because it's so close to the Riverdale Road. It's really-
Right, just a question, though, if it helped or not, that's all.
Well, in theory, it would help because you take some traffic off of this road and this road, and now you have another road that you're using. Because obviously, you're not using the capacity of that road. So if you make that connection, you would, you'd turn that into another collector, and so you could draw traffic from the parallel roads to you. Because again, that, that would be now a continuous thing, because your tracks are really your impediment. You only have so many crossings, right? And so for everybody over here that wants to go to I-15, they have limited connectivity. And so at least from 35th, you would have another collector road. It's just how much you would draw from this area is probably minimal. How much you draw from here is a function of how busy these two are and how congested they are, and people find that path of least resistance. I can't give you a number, though.
On honesty, we did 4,814 years ago, Ross, widen it, and now it's not sufficient enough to carry the load.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely helps. I think the feasibility, that's probably the bigger question. I mean, just even.
But what, I mean, I don't think going over, it makes sense. But, but if you wanted to go under, it's, it's still a big process to try to get it under the tracks there and everything. It'd be pretty expensive.
Didn't know if it helps or hinder, that's all the question.
Yeah.
I'm thinking like you were saying, if we want to keep the fill of 48 as a three-way and not widen it to a five, then that would, that's an option, I think, to keep the fill of the city.
Because you're always going to have the rail crossing.
We can afford it, make it a five.
Now, keep in mind too, on-
If we wanted a five.
So what's our right-of-way on 48 exactly? Do we, did we figure out exactly our right-of-way on 48?
I think we're in 48.
That's asphalt, I mean, right-of-way. It is? So here, here's the thing, is technically, if we have that much right-of-way, 84, 85 feet of right-of-way, you could rebuild that as a five-lane road without taking houses. Because, because essentially, you're taking up, the park strip wouldn't be there anymore. And if we have that much right-of-way, we probably have some of the front yards that people think are there, but that's not maybe where the right-of-way line is. But in 80 to 84 foot right-of-way, you can make a five-lane road if that's what you decide to do.
So with that grade there, I mean, chances of getting an overpass, it'd be a launch pad. Like Dave talked about 5200, is that something that you could go under?
Railroad already told us they would never give us a permit.
To go under it?
Or over it. They only want the one-
Well, they can just keep hitting cars there. I mean, I'm sure they love it.
No, we're fixing that, Joe.
I know, but it still doesn't negate the fact that it's a busy intersection. And it's only going to get worse until-
No, it's, I mean, right now, especially- Yeah, I was going to say, once you get rid of the high school, it might be okay. But, now, the high school is a big draw, and right when the high school gets out, it's going to back up there because inevitably, a commuter rail or two are coming by and, and. An overpass would be difficult because it's of the grade issues, but I think railroad would give you a hard time, too. Because even an underpass, you got the hills and you got down below. So where do you want to, you know, at some point, the roads have to meet, and if they're not doing this, you chase yourself down and touch down at the roundabout, you know, in terms of that structure. Or you go in and then you have such a side cut, it's just in San Francisco, and I looked, I can't remember the street now. But it showed picture, I went to the National Geographic Societal Society, and they showed one like this, and then you had the cross slope that came down. It's going to be, it'll look like a giant cut, like some of the freeways that cut through a mountainside type of thing, if you go, if you tried to go underneath, that type of thing, to get back to grade. Okay, so that, questions on? Again, it's tied for questions, but digest, and I'm always available for, for questions, too. So this next one, just kind of, this next four, I'll kind of go through, but you can take a look at. But they just have the different type of road cross-sections. So what we try to do is develop a standard that we have. Now, we have existing roads that we may call major collectors that don't look exactly like this because that's what we have, right? But the idea is if we were to build something or we wanted to modify something, we would go through and take a look at this. The key thing to look at here is, this one is typically what we're thinking of for 56 West. So this is more of your traditional sidewalk, park strip, curb, gutter, shoulders, turning lanes, et cetera. And this one is more of what we would have as, with a multi-use path. And so what we're thinking right now, this is being implemented as one of our options, so it's in our master plan, so that UDOT has that as, and we're designating that. Because right now, the thought was, we would have still sidewalk on one side, but we want to try to get more of a multi-use path. And so once you get to 10 feet, we call it a multi-use path, and you can have two-directional flow. So it's for everybody, skateboards, electric scooters, you know, bikes, et cetera. But it's more of a multi-use path for everyone as opposed to a sidewalk. Because right now, technically, you're not supposed to have bikes on the sidewalk. So even if you've got your five-year-old riding a bike school, he's supposed to be in the street. And the multi-use path gives you a little bit better opportunity. And we do have an elementary school along 56, so. So anyway, that's kind of what these cross-sections are for, is to give us different opportunities, different looks. It really comes down to whether you have three lanes or five lanes of traffic, and then what do you do on the side? With shoulders, without shoulders, park strips, how big, sidewalk or multi-use paths? But that's kind of what we're playing with, and all of that takes space.
That option B then would be is 110 feet. So if we went with that for the 56 option, we look at 110 feet cut.
Yes, and what they would try to do is do one-sided, so they only take one row of houses. But that's why I say, it's probably having 80-foot right-now right-of-way, so they're going to need another 30 feet. That, unless you want to open the door and wax cars as they go by.
Let's go back to 48, out of your conversation, wide enough to make it a five-lane road.
I think it's 66 when I look at it.
Okay, then that's not wide enough. That's why I was asking, it's all about the right-of-way.
Just think about options out of the box. Where it's not likely to have traffic going three lanes, one direction, at the end of the day, have them going three-way in the opposite direction.
They use traffic lights to-
So you're talking about 54 South?
Yes, I travel at every-
In Tamersville?
Yes.
And there are reversible lane options. Phoenix does it as well, both their 7th Avenue and 7th Street outside of Phoenix. They have, have the reversible, Washington up Constitution, I think, has it. There are several ways to do it. I will tell you that you will see a higher accident rate no matter what because they just introduce a confusion. But that's a way to better utilize your asphalt pavement, is you would put in a reversible lane that way. So that you basically are saying, well, no, what I really have is a four-lane road, and I have two lanes in one direction, a turn lane and one lane in the other direction, and then I just flip those in the, in the afternoon. 54th does it with Cantonary, overhead Cantonarys, Ontario does it that way, et cetera. Some places just do it with signage. Washington has just signage, Phoenix, the two corridors are just signs that say time of day, here's, here's what to expect. And then you have special signing, excuse me, special striping that's been approved by the manual of uniform traffic control devices that we would put down there for that. It is outside-of-the-box thinking. The other question would be with 48th and the grade issues, do we want to try to do something just in certain sections? Like, is the hill the constraint? And we want to keep it, because you can mix and match a little bit, too. You could say, you know, I want the three-lane section through the residential by the high school, but when I get to the hill, it'd be nice to have two uphill lanes because that's the constraint from, from the roundabout up. And then because we have the two lanes that go down through the roundabout and then merge type of thing. So you can look at that. It's all about right-of-way and what, what we want to do. Right now, on the 27th and 48th intersection modifications, we're trying to get that right turn lane as long as possible because we're eliminating the left turn onto 27th. And so we're trying to squeeze things to the south as much as we can so that we can get the, excuse me, to the north as much as we can so we can get that eastbound right turn onto 27th a little bit longer. So when you do have the backup from the train, people that want to go up and make a right on 27th, hopefully, can get in a little bit easier. I mean, if, you know, if the train backs you to the roundabout, there's nothing you can do about it. But you just have to wait, and that's a factor of having a train run through. But that's what we're trying to do right now. But you can look at the different sections and see if you want to do something like that. And a reversible lane is something you could do. I caution it because it is typically a little more confusing, and with the high school there, I'm just afraid you'd see an increase in accident rates.
Well, like you said, if you did a portion below the tracks.
And that could be something that we would, we would think about. And we also have to make sure that it's, when we're seeing these things and the capacity constraints, which there are capacity constraints, constraints, which there are capacity constraints, but the train, more lanes isn't going to fix the train, the train congestion, that's just that function. So I want to make sure we're not trying to fix something that's, because like when I see it, at least when high school, the high school gets out, when I see it, it's heavy, but it's bad because the train comes through and blocks everybody up and then that just has to clear and more lanes aren't going to help you unfortunately with that, with that situation. That's where your overpass or your underpass would be something that you would be thinking more about.
For that.
Can we do something like that? Or is that just sucks to have a train run through our town? Okay, so this is our build-out classification map. What we tried to do was overlay the road classification changes on top of the existing so you could see what was going to change and then also include the additional intersection control that we think you're going to need just based on those volumes increasing and needing that roundabout traffic signal, et cetera. Cross-sections we talked about and you can go through the different ones and to be honest with you, you can, we could have A through F of each of these because it's what you do with the shoulder, the park strip, that's where we tried to do things like put in bike lane or shoulder, you know, and just understand because normally, you know, with a nine-and-a-half foot lane, you have to have at least a 10-foot lane to call it a travel lane, right? But if you, we had a 10-foot here, made this 11-and-a-half feet, then technically that could be a bike lane or a shoulder or another travel lane. And that's essentially what we've done for the arterials is if you have that outside lane, that shoulder, it gives you the flexibility to do some different things that way. On these collector roads, though, we tend not to want to have five-lane collectors. We, that's why I was kind of saying, normally we're having three-lane collectors and then when we get to five-lane, we're talking about arterials type of thing. Okay, this right now is our transit map, this is an existing map. We have not gone in and said, "We want to make wholesale changes to transit." This would be something if we decided that there were changes that we'd want to make, we'd have to say the reason, what's the cause, et cetera. Otherwise, this was just kind of an inventory map, if you will. Where the stops are, where our commuter rail stop is, the train versus the buses and service and then, it's hard to read, but they actually, we have the routes on there. And again, nothing new, this is just an inventory map. Questions about transit or anything maybe we haven't talked about in terms of, not sure light rail's planned anywhere around here? Don't need a circulator trolley downtown or anything?
Nope.
Maybe Christmas trolley?
Well, they talked about an express route from, you know, basically North Ogden down, Washington up Riverdale, down 1900 to State Street. I don't know why they don't do it as a trolley.
An express route down there? Because usually express route means you don't want to go on the arterials, you want to be on the freeways.
Isn't that what they call it, Bob?
Yeah, it's a...
An express route?
They said it won't have a, it'll be like the one going up to Weaver State, but it won't have a dedicated lane.
Enhanced transit dedicated line.
Oh, it's a BRT and a shared lane, Bus Rapid Transit. Does that sound...
That probably sounds closer.
Okay. That makes more sense to me.
Express route was close about it.
Express, well, I was just saying...
Getting there to it quicker.
Well, the route you told me didn't seem expressy. But no, okay.
It's probably because I drive, ride the express bus to work in the morning.
So that, that could be something, and once they do a shared lane, essentially that's just an enhanced bus route where essentially they'll put in queue jumpers, so essentially they'll put a little spot, they'll make a spot at the intersection where the bus can kind of come up and then it gets the green light first so it can get ahead of the traffic type of thing, or they'll do something. But if it's not in its own lane, you know, it...
They did say it wouldn't have a dedicated lane like the one going up to Weaver State. I can't remember where they were talking, but...
So they're talking about one up Weaver State, they're putting the one in on University up to BYU from UVU and then there's one in, it's called the MAX in West Valley, which is on 35th South in West Valley, and they have dedicated lanes. To be honest, if you don't have dedicated lanes, you're just helping them out at the intersections as a queue jump.
So I'm wondering, would it make sense to do like a trolley line or...
It depends on your purpose. A trolley line, are you talking rail or rubber tire trolley?
Probably rail.
Okay, so rail trolley, the thing is UTA does not like to mix the vehicles, so they would want their own right-of-way for the rail system. You know, it's not going to be like the San Francisco trolleys type of thing, or they haven't at least embraced that concept. They think of it more as moving people and they want more of the light rail and above. Like the Sugar House trolley even, if you look at that, it has its own corridor that they put in. They call it the trolley because that's what people wanted, but they're just a different type of light rail. And the reason they call it a trolley is because they have common sections where they have single track instead of two-way track and so one direction may have to stop and wait in a passing area while this direction goes and then they can go on because they've utilized some single track along there in certain sections and so they call it the trolley, but, I mean, I guess the thing is, is having a mixed-use vehicle without its own separate right-of-way is not something, other than rubber tire, is not a rail option UTA has embraced anyway.
Are they embracing rubber tire trolleys?
Well, it's more like Salt Lake has that circulator trolley that's just for the downtown area that circulates around and it's more of a touristy thing than really a transportation thing, just so you know.
Well, I know one of the things, I mean, through this whole transportation plan, we need to work with UDOT more and I just run into it today. So I got off the train and 604, I'm looking at it, the 604 to get me home to the far end of Roy is a half an hour away. So fortunately I called my wife, but there were, there were other people waiting for that same bus and one lady, we offered and gave her a ride, but it's like, they need to get those timed better. The problem is, is 604 will pull into the parking lot just as the train's leaving, so you're waiting a half an hour for the next train.
Yeah. That's, to be honest, UTA is going to, that, UDOT has nothing to do with that, that's all UTA on that, yeah.
But that's something we need to work with them on.
Coordinate that, they're trying to do that.
Doing our transportation plan.
Yeah.
You know, if we start looking at mixed-use areas in the city and say, okay, mixed-use generally don't have as many vehicles because they're the little higher density housing, how are we going to get those people around? Do we have better bus routes through the city? Can we get them from downtown? Well, the one guy standing there, he called Uber because he wasn't going to wait a half an hour. But do we have, that's like for me, that's why I hardly ride the train, it was just a fluke that I brought the train home today, because there is not a good way to get from the train station to my house.
And unfortunately, that's part of our suburban nature because we don't have the density to have those things. Like you go to, you know, I hate to throw out New York or the denser cities and that's where they can have that headway of three, five-minute headways, or you have multiple ones that cross and you go, oh, I missed this one, but I'll take this one and then I just have to walk a block that way instead of a block that way. But that's usually under denser cities because right now, we're usually running half-hour headways, like you say, and so unfortunately, to get those headways down is either a lot more money invested in it because you're saying, if I'm covering the same area...
Or timing your headways a little bit better. You know your train's, you know your train's the biggest movement through there, why not wind up your bus schedules to where the train lands and the bus leaves?
They're supposed to be doing that, just so you know. So that would be maybe a question that the city could ask UTA, say, hey, can you come and give us a presentation on, we only have the one commuter rail stop and these routes, could you come tell us about your headways? Could you tell us about your future plans? Could you tell us about, do you keep, because they keep statistics on those, how often are the buses and the trains missing each other, is there a way we can adjustment because we have personal experience, we have customer feedback that maybe we could be doing a little bit better job.
As we look at our transportation plan, I think we have to encompass that in there as part of moving people around.
We do and that's why I said, this is purely an inventory. If you thought that there was a better mousetrap for Roy on transit or enhancement that we could do, that's where we'd want to kind of think about that, put that together because that's where UTA would be part of the partnership because I don't think the city's going to take on its own transit system, but that's where you kind of say, hey, you know what? This is a big distance between our routes, any chance we can get one running up here? Or something like that, you know? What else would you want to see for a bus enhancement that you would see, other than the coordination? And that's a conversation you can have right with them too. You know, we talked to, well, we probably talked to Hal or somebody over at UTA and say, what can we do to maybe make these, these a little more seamless in terms of their connectivity because it feels like the rail and the bus aren't playing nice together.
Well, if they hooked up, I think you could eliminate some of the traffic on the road because people are more likely to use them.
Yeah.
But it's just like, that was my experience in the past and I experienced it today and it's like, okay, I probably won't get on the train for another six months.
Which is interesting because that should be what they're trying to do. Unfortunately, once you get onto the commuter rail, it's just that, it's intended more as a commuter rail, so they, they kind of also think that, well, maybe some people are using the buses, but a lot of people are parked right here, so we're just getting them to their car because there's a big park and ride lot right there. But that's, that's something definitely, because they, I know they try to do that because at least in the other places they've talked and I've sat in sessions where they talk about that, that idea is to be seamless and have the buses either waiting there for the train and they tend to do that sort of...
Well, it happens in Salt Lake.
Well, they do it more with light rail and I think the thing is, is maybe, maybe that's, the philosophy is on the commuter rail, they're thinking it's more of a park and ride utilization as opposed to a bus, bus connection type of thing, even though they have that. But when they look at it and say, well, I got one route that connects here, but it's kind of like, well, yeah, then make that one route meet the train. So, I mean, that's definitely a conversation that, you know, we could, we could have or we could initiate with UTA. Okay, so this is our Trails and Bikes Plan. We have expanded this a little bit in terms of, the opportunity here is, we have our main trail, obviously, that runs down. There are crossing points that we think we can do some enhancements and we went and looked at each of the crossing points to try to say, can we make this a little bit safer by some, some retro reflective flashing beacons, which are things that are activated by pedestrians and flash, maybe some refuge islands so we make it more of a two-stage crossing and we can show you some examples of those, but that was kind of what we're thinking about the main trail because the trail's actually a great amenity, it's kind of neat. If I lived up here, I'd definitely buy an electric scooter and use it because I'm too lazy to walk the whole thing. But they, it seems like a great amenity. As we get into, what we have is we have some existing bike lanes that have been put on certain roads and then we have an opportunity to expand it. What we're not talking about, we just call them bike routes because we're not saying this road has to have a bike lane, this road has to have a shared path. Because what the shared paths are is you designated a bike lane and then you might have sharrows in the lane and it's really to let vehicles know, hey, you got to share the road, you got to play nice here. And, but you don't want to put that on every road because some people think, oh, well, let's put that everywhere so everybody knows. Well, then they tune out and they desensitize. If you have the designated routes and the connectors, we're going to put, you know, you put the bike route signs up, you say, you know, right to share the road, you have the sharrows, which are the arrows with the bike in the lane and then hopefully people are playing a little bit nicer.
I have one question about those flashing crossing lights for bikes. So they put the, the activation switch right at the curb, would it make sense to put the activation switch like as you're coming through the faint, the gate, so you can activate it before you get to the curb?
Well, and that's a good question. I think, so they typically try to put it there because the idea too is if you're through the gate, then anybody who wants to cross that was walking on the crosswalk now has to go through the gate to push the button. So if it's right there at the crossing point, it, it usually supports the crosswalk and the trail because...
I just watched the one on 5600 because I drive that.
The hawk or the, or the trail crossing?
The trail crossing.
Okay.
So what they do is they ride up to it, let both ways and go across it because they don't want to push the button and wait for the lights to come on.
I...
Could you have a double active, could you have...
Two buttons?
Yeah. One farther in.
One farther, do you think, I guess the question is, are those people going to use that anymore with it further back? I, I kind of look at it as we provide the opportunity for informing drivers and then, and then somewhere in here Darwin kicks in and if you decide to run out in front of a car...
Yeah.
I mean, I want to provide a safe environment for you as best I can, if you choose not to use it, that's part of our free will system. But I, but that's, that's not a bad idea if you want to put an activation because all you do is you'd run the same wire, pigtail it and then run it back to a push button, it's a little post back there. I believe that trail's managed by UTA as part of commuter rail and so those crossing points too would be something that we could ask them about. Because I have seen double connection points, so some of the corridors where we have bike routes, we, at the crossing, at the crossing routes for, for things like that, you have the push buttons that are maybe tied to the traffic signal pole for the pedestrians, but bikers that are in the lane, they get a little separate pole in the, in the bike strip.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I've seen, they can't remember where I've seen it, but I've seen it before.
Yeah, because they're, so if you're in Salt Lake anyway, the sixth, about around Liberty Park, 6th East Corridor is probably the one to take a look at on either side of Liberty Park, but they do that so the bikes don't have to get up on the curb and push the button, they can stay on their bike, they still are supposed to stop, push the button, wait for the light, but those are the bike crossing activation ones and that, those are, right along the 6th East Corridor is probably the best, in Salt Lake, the best to see, there are other places, obviously.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah.
I'm just going to ask you a question. When I read the bike trail down, down in Leighton and I crossed Anlo on that bike trail, they actually took the trail under Anlo in large part because I think of the widening issue. Is there a proposal on 5600 if it comes back to widen it, to consider going under it?
I'm glad you brought that up, so actually there is. This is the great separated trail crossing and the two that we would think along that corridor that they would be thinking of is the 56 West location and so the way to think of that is, this is 56 South, what did I say, West?
You said West.
I'm sorry. 56 South going, going, running this way, so you would basically, they would drop the trail to go underneath and then they'd raise it back up and tie in and so you'd have an underpass and with that, what you'd probably also do is have ramps coming down from the sidewalks so that the kids from the school, et cetera, could use that. Because right now, and, and so that was one location, the other location is Hinckley, if that trail's extended up there, that's a natural thing because it's, Hinckley's climbing right there, so you put a box culvert in and that would be kind of an underpass there as well.
Joe, just, when we met with UDOT, they are aware and want to make sure that there is a crossing there. There was some discussion about whether that goes over or under. Apparently the one in West Haven got a little bit of flack going under because parents don't like to send their kids underneath the road because they can't see. I don't know, I mean, that's, that was the discussion.
That's the parents'...
But there is very much a discussion and they are very aware.
Great separated, I won't say what.
We couldn't...
I think the math's right, great separated.
Yeah, that's right. We couldn't iterate enough to them that, that there's a huge need for a great separated crossing because right now, as people are coming up over the tracks, then all of a sudden they have those flashing lights and we have a backup and we also have lots of accidents there. And so they, they are very aware. The question really was, is like, hey, can we do two there? Because the separation between the trail and the school is about, is such that it's kind of questionable when the kids go up to the, I mean, that was one of the discussions.
So here, here, that's a good point and we'll just focus on this a little bit and talk about a couple of things real quick. Right here, 27th and 56. So, here's your overpass, comes over, Public Works right here. There's a traffic signal right there. Right past the traffic signal is your crossing for the trail. A little further down, there's what, right now, a hawk, which is the flashing beacon for the pit crossing. And that's also where your elementary school is. We are seeing a ton of accidents here, because you're coming down a hill to a signal, and then you get through the signal, it's green, woo, I got through the signal, and then all of a sudden, people are stopping short. And then they go past the trail, and then they're stopping short again. And you just have too many things happening in that short distance. So, the plan that we would think, you're probably still gonna have the light at 27th. You put the grade separation for the trail, so you do an underpass there. You get rid of the hawk, because we want to see the new signal at 31st. And so if the elementary school's here, they're either going down, they're still gonna be able to cross at 27th, but hopefully, they're using the underpass at the trail. And then if they want to go the other way, they're coming down, and we have a new signalized crossing at 31st. And get rid of that hawk, because I think you just have, you got three things, and that's just too many things in that short distance. So, you're always gonna see accidents, because you're just putting acceleration, deceleration, and then stopping quickly. Too close.
Compounding if there's five lanes on there.
And once you get to five lanes, is where we try not to, five lanes, you can do hawks on five lanes. The problem that you usually run into is, it's kind of like normal crosswalks, you know, at five lanes, is they see something, but because it starts flashing, well, if I don't see anybody, I can go. And why is this guy still stopped? Oh, well, I'll go. And that's when somebody walks out from behind there. So, that's why the true signalized intersections, we try to, for five lanes, we try to put them out of the grade separated. And I think if we did this, you have signal, signal properly spaced, grade separated, you'd see a huge reduction in those rear-end collisions in that section of road.
It's old. Let's get it done.
Tuh?
I said, "So, let's get it done."
So, that's actually...
You are really against it.
Yeah, they are.
That's part of their environmental assessment, and they're looking at how they can get, where they can fit those in exactly, but that's part of that.
It's unfortunately a two-edged sword, because I think there's appropriate places for hawks. If we wouldn't have had the trail crossing, that hawk probably wouldn't be, that's one of the only hawks on a UDOT road, or that was one of the first ones. And so they kind of use that as, "We don't really like hawks on our roads." So, it backfired, unfortunately. I think there's appropriate places, but all this happening together, that's, that's... I think we have a good solution if that's how we move forward for that. So, anyway, we get into some other things about trail crossing locations. Again, most of the enhancements are here, and most, and the grade separations are these two. But most of these are just showing how we would designate some of these bike routes. And what you see is most of our bike routes, we try to put on our collector roads. I'm not a big person. You're gonna have the commuter guys that want to be on the 50 mile an hour road, and they have a bike lane or something, and that's what you see on the 19th West and the Midland. But on a lot of our streets, that's where you want to see most people that want to cycle, because now they're interacting with cars going 25 and 30, not 45 and 50. And I'll just tell you, if something happens, that speed difference is life altering.
Joe, also, just through the council's information, your bike lanes, your bike routes, and your trails, we tried to complement this with the Focus Roy Plan and our other bike and trail plan that we have, so...
So, you had an adopted circulation and trails plan, and that was the basis for this. And then, so we haven't really eliminated things. We kind of included things that we thought you could actually add additional to. Not, so we didn't, we didn't, like, say, "Oh, we don't like," you know, start from a blank map. We started and we tried to enhance from the adopted plan. All right. Now it's a party. I'm almost done. So, this is what you guys all waited for, right? The speed map. So, what we have are posted speeds, and then what we have is what we call the 85th percentile. We go out and we count at least 100 spot locations, because that'll give us a statistical value with a confidence of 1 to 2 miles an hour. We put in the, the posted speeds are in black, and then in parentheses are the 85th percentile speeds. And the idea for this is, you can see where we're seeing differences. So, you can put a speed out there, but this is the reality of what people are driving in.
So, basically, we want to take 57 and put it to a 40 mile an hour instead of 25 mile an hour.
What, well, so right now, so right now, typically, if you're not, if you're 85th percentile...
Yeah, it was just for you, Sam.
But we have 36?
Taking 57, and Joe wants to put it from a 25 to a 40.
Nah, just a 30. That'll get into our traffic.
I'll just bury some tanner right in the road, and every now and again, I'll pop a shot off that if the slow cars down. You've already, you've already given me a cut for it, so we'll just throw some, throw some in there.
The idea is just so you can see what the posted speed versus the 85th percentile is. If we have more than a 5 mile an hour differential, that's when we typically would go out and take a look. If one says 34, it is posted 30, you don't have to worry about things, unless, you know, you can. That gives you, if you wanted to increase, but typically, the idea is just to say, if we see a speeding problem, so more than that 5 mile an hour differential between posted and 85th, then we start thinking, "Okay, let's take a look. Is there something we can do? What's different here? Is there some traffic calming or some other methods?" Because I will say, as we start responding to residents, there's perception and there's reality. And the bottom line is, we want to respond to reality. Otherwise, I guarantee you, as soon as you put a speed bump on one road, the next road over goes, "Where's my speed bump?" And so that's where, unfortunately, if we don't keep a handle on this and have a process for developing it, a lot of cities have said, "It's too expensive. We're just eliminating the traffic calming." And I think there's real value in traffic calming when there's a problem. It's just going through and kind of, sometimes giving that tough love to the residents that, "Well, we're gonna see if there is a problem," versus... Because I guarantee you, the person that comes into the plane says, "They're going 80 miles an hour every day down my road." And usually, we haven't found that.
So, that 31 is the 85th percentile, so it's consistently...
It is above. So, that would be one of the places that we would say, much like 43rd, should, is probably underposted. 43rd probably should be more like 30. The question is, is that a road that, that's the 85th percentile? So, do you want to respond to the 85th percentile, or do you want to try to do something to slow the traffic down? But that's what I'm saying, is it's one or the other usually. Otherwise, you're ignoring, you know, the issue, which is, we have a greater than 5 miles per hour differential.
So, either, yeah, either fix the sign.
You either change the sign and say, "We did a speed study, and this is the 85th percentile. So, I know you guys don't like it, but this is functioning more like a minor collector as opposed to a residential street, and therefore, this is more appropriate to meet what it should be doing, which is not always popular, I guarantee you." Because like I say, when I started, I think everybody thinks if there's a driveway on the road, it's a residential street. But that's one. The other option would be to do traffic calming and say, "Let's try to see if we can drop that speed up." You're probably not gonna get more than a few miles an hour differential, but you could do certain things to do that.
Most of the time, it's the people that live in that neighborhood that is doing that speed. So, it's like, okay, well, I just upped it from your 25 to your 30. You're already going 30.
Yeah.
I mean, if you honestly tell yourself, you know what I mean, if you're telling the honesty...
And that's...
You know, you're going 30. You're not going the 25.
No, and you're not. And the problem is, is that nine out of 10 times, well, eight and a half out of 10 times, the speeders are the people that live in that. If it's truly kind of a confined residential area, they're people that live there or live within the neighborhood.
So, if you put it to a 30, they ain't go 35?
Well, that's the answer.
Yeah, you know what? You're right.
There's a natural flow to a road, though, so some people feel that if I start upping it, it's a camel's nose in the tent, and everything seems to get more and more. So, what we would normally do is, you would start with maybe some feedback signs. So, those are the speed signs that kind of flash at you, because some people just are so familiar with the road, they don't look at their speedometer. They think they're going 25. And it's not until they get something flash at them and says, "Hey, you're doing 31," they go, "Oh, this is my neighborhood." You know, and there's all kinds of programs.
So, guilt.
They're basically guilt shame programs. Yeah.
Guilt's a good shame.
But that, but sometimes it's just given that information. So, a feedback sign you could put out there that, you know, I like the ones with the dots that kind of flash at you and then gives you your speed. And if it truly is the neighbors and they're conscious and they want to be good neighbors, then that lots of times can help with that, reducing a couple of speeds there. We have a park at the end of this road, because we're talking about here on 57. So, the question is, this would be a case where, well, we're not sure if it is the residents or people going to the park type of thing, and maybe they don't live in that neighborhood. And so, normally, in this case, we would start with maybe some feedback signs to see if that helped. Then we'd go into...
We're gonna put a couple of those little...
That's what's the next thing. We could do some, we could do, like a version of street furniture. So, it's not like truly a roundabout, but there's lots of common devices. You could do vertical speed humps. You could do chicanes, which narrow the road and make people, and, you know, put like a center island in areas, so it makes them kind of feel like the road's tighter and they slow down. Or we can do traffic circles. And traffic circles have been fairly popular. They're kind of the fad and the popularity right now, because you essentially, at a couple of your strategically placed intersections, you just put a round circle and some landscaping or something that makes people feel like they have to divert just a little bit. And that slows them down, because it's not a straight shot. Look, four blocks down is where I want to be. I just go. You hit these little circles, and then they go around. And so, we've seen those come up in lots of cities on longer stretches of corridors where they don't want to do vertical or high-cost things, because they're pretty inexpensive. But it's an opportunity to see if those are effective. So, those would be the two I would think you would start with, would be feedback and traffic circles. So, yeah, people say on the speed humps, too, "How fat can you get air?" you know, type of thing. So, that's where we took a look.
All the speed humps, because that makes plowing miserable.
Yeah. So, we do speed tables. We don't do speed humps type of thing. So, there's a design. It's about a 30-foot, so 10-foot ramp, 10-foot table, 10-foot down. And it's designed specifically for snow areas, so it's not the parking lot Smith speed bump type of thing that we were, we would put in there. But you're right. You have to think about that. And fire trucks and your snowplow guys will not like you. For vertical, but they are the most effective usually at slowing traffic down.
And you'd have to put a couple of them in, because if you just put one, like, if you put just a stop sign, it's gonna really tick them off, because now you've just stopped their flow of traffic.
They're gonna go like heck to it, and then they're gonna...
So, stop signs, it's actually recommended, you don't use stop signs if you don't have the warrant for traffic calming, because that's what they found, is actually, you would see the speeds in between those sections go up, because people feel like, "You took, I stopped for no reason. You took time. I have to make up that time." And so, stop signs are definitely not recommended as a traffic calming device. If that's your goal is to, if it's control, because we had balanced floors and people are waiting too long on the side street, but it's a traffic control device, so it's stop signs, traffic signals, roundabouts kind of have their purpose as controlling an intersection, because you have too much conflicting flow. We get into the traffic circles, chicane, speed bumps, when we talk about slowing people down, but we really don't want to change the intersection control, you know, type of thing. Because, you know, if you have 80% of your traffic on 57 and just a little bit on the side street, then you're stopping everybody. I mean, if you're environmentally conscious, you just increased your air pollution quite a bit for that intersection. Things like that, that are kind of like, well, do we have other options that maybe we don't affect those things?
Keep them flowing, but make them overt enough that they slow down.
Yes. And that is typically a vertical or horizontal deflection, or giving them that information if they're actually conscious in the neighborhood of, "I just, I drive, and I never look at my speedometer once I get on my street," and type of thing, and then letting them be aware of that. So, those are kind of the ones that tend to work the most effectively. Right now, here's where we're talking about potentially doing some traffic calming, just based on the speeds and kind of the feedback from the city. But this would be the dynamic map that I would love to see input from everybody in their neighborhood. But then we'd go to the speed map and take a look at the intersections before we just say, "Yeah, put one there, put one there." And maybe this corridor, 57th to the park, is your test corridor to see how effective those, those traffic circles are, if you wanted to do those, or the feedback signs, or some of those things that we would take a look at. But right now, these are the logical places, as we drive around and looked at things, where you might want to think of those traffic circles right now. And that was just a starting map, but something to think about.
So, if we could take a timeout real quick. Ross and Mayor Council approved a stop sign on 57. The very next couple of days, that's where we went out and drove it, and we looked at some of these circles. And I think I reached out to Joe, who was kind of the lead on that stop sign. Ross did do some checking on the prices of it. Where are we at with it? Can we go ahead and do a couple of those, so we can see?
We're doing one, two, as soon as we pull start stop.
Yeah.
They've already covered it for conduit, for a power pole in the middle of it.
That way, we can, so we're not waiting and...
It's like right here, Travis's fault.
So, on that one, I saw you had three little dots. I thought you were talking about one above that one.
Well, he does have three, so just three strategically placed between 35 and...
And I thought you were talking about putting one closer to...
Yeah, he's got the three there.
So, again, this is, this is draft for us to think about, because normally, what you do is you put these in series, because what you don't want is one in the middle of a big, long stretch. Again, you don't get the benefit from it. It's like a speed bump. You don't put one. And you kind of have this series along that stretch of road.
I was thinking originally, they were talking, the first one on that, the cross street, one up above there.
Coming out of one of them cul-de-sacs.
Up, up over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and ideally, we would, and like I say, right now, this was kind of more of the discussion, you know. Hopefully, we have draft on everything, so we don't adopt. But like, right now, I'd really like to go out, this was the main intersection that you talked about, and I think when we talked, I think we probably did, because here's the church, right? Yeah. So, I think we probably did talk about this side also having one, but when I looked at the length again, everyone's coming from a stop there, so if we were only doing three, I kind of like this three. But if we can do a fourth, you're right, I would have one more right there. It's just kind of like, if that's our calming device, this was the lowest segment. Otherwise, if we did these three, then all of a sudden, we had kind of a longer segment into the park.
Yeah, I was thinking it is. You almost have that, because you go up over the canal on the road.
And we can, again, this, the idea, in fact, the thought is, what we do is, we got our data for now here, and I know we were maybe moving forward with one.
Do the one and then see.
We do the one, and then we probably go out there and see what's happening, and then we would strategically say, because maybe you're right, we don't need this one, but we want one over here. So, what we normally would do on this corridor, speed counts with the radar guns and things like that are very, fairly inexpensive and easy to get the data. And so what we do is, we put this one in, and then maybe we do a couple of locations where we decide, "Look, let's just do speed right here." And maybe it's not even 100 points, because it takes a while, since that's not a very busy road. Maybe do 50 shots at each location and say, "What are my speeds at the locations to see which..." Because traffic calming devices do have kind of this magic spacing of what's effective and what's not, and each one's a little bit different, 300 feet, 660 feet, depending on which one it is. And the traffic circles tend to be something where, if you see, if you visually see, "Well, that's coming up. There's no sense accelerating." And that's, that's where you kind of want to put those at that.
I know one of the officers was down there the other day, and he was surprised. He was writing 45 mile an hour speeding tickets on a 25 mile an hour road.
Yeah. And what I can do, because we have those, again, we were doing so many spots, we were trying to just do that, because normally, if this, we just say, "Okay, let's do a real speed study." We'd lay tubes out for, you know, three or four days type of thing and get a whole bunch of data for all the data through there. What we were trying to do was get just a statistical number of that 85th percentile, because you saw how many points we did, and I didn't want to... No, I could've spent a lot of your money having somebody sit on each street. But it would've changed what we were gonna report type of thing. But you're right, and I, and there are gonna be those. Because again, that's where you use 85th percentile, because you can't design necessarily for that one person that... And I'm sure there's people going 50 miles an hour. I see it in my road, too, and I'm not happy about it. I, my, the Salt Lake traffic engineer doesn't really like me anymore, because I put things out and send him to information all the time and go, "What are you gonna do about it? Where's my speed limit? Where?" I don't do that anymore. When they, when they changed the geometry of 13, I measured the speed changes and the volume changes, because my road happened to become a cut-through. And I was like, "What are you gonna do with this 24% increase on my road?" And he's like, "Whoa, no." And I was like, "Here's the data." Okay, so that was just kind of the start of a traffic calming map, but those are the places that jumped out at us as potential. Again, traffic calming is meant for 30 mile and below roads. You wouldn't start looking at 35 or 40 mile an hour roads and say, "Oh, look, we have speeding, so we need to calm things." Just so you know, that, we have to do something different on those roads. Okay, last slide. Thank you for your patience and indulgence. So, right now, what we take a look at is, normally, what we'd try to do if we had a little more time is, is we come up with kind of your hotspot intersections, because intersections tend to be the most dangerous locations. We did get some accident data. The question then becomes, if you want to move into an accident analysis, we kind of look at the accident reports. What are the cause of it? What would be the solutions to that? This is just kind of giving you the citywide overview of accidents, where they are, not really what type they are, but we also put in the severity. I'm sorry, on the printout, that came out black, I think, so hopefully, the percentages. But essentially, one is fender bender, two, you start to get, you know, whiplash type of thing. Three is more of an injury accident, but not life-threatening. Four would be severity. If you had any fives on here, that would be considered fatalities. This comes again from the accident database, which is, two things come from this. So, we have the accident information that we were able to get that Ross sent us over, or didn't you send it through, Dory? Oh, Jason sent it. I'm sorry. Give credit where credit is due. So, we got it from Jason, and so we were able to kind of filter through that. Based on that information is where we came up with some of these accident, how many accidents happened where. And this represents... Three years, Amy?
Three.
Two years.
Two years.
It was October 8th of 16 to October 8th of 18.
Okay, so two years of information. This is, the ones on UDOT roads and the FAL routes are actually UDOT-reported information. So, they keep, just like they report to the feds, so we'll have to say, "How accurate is that type of thing?" And that is information from... What's the accident for UDOT's information go from, too?
Wait, sorry, what was the question?
The UDOT ones? What years are those?
Uh, that's a three-year.
That's a three-year through 16, though, right?
It's not the...
13 to 16?
I think it's two-year.
16.
16.
So, the UDOT information is from 2013 to 16, so we are kind of mixing some data here. But this just kind of gives you an idea. Green, good. Yellow's getting worse. Red is bad. Black is your worst routes. And that's based on either accident numbers or the severity of those accidents. And that just kind of gives us an idea. So, we can see 56 is a bad corridor. This piece of 19th is bad. Riverdale Road's bad. And then we have this section of 48, which we would consider... Pardon me. Really, from our city streets, we're in pretty good shape. This is the only real section we would consider a bad section of road from an accident and safety standpoint. And that's unfortunately, though, the section between 27th and 19th West. So, that's in front of the high school.
Coming down that, yeah.
So, that's what the data is telling us, and that was, again, just to give you more of a citywide global view of what we're seeing accident-wise. This can be refined. It's just a very labor-intensive thing of identifying where exactly things happen. We start having to go through accident reports, see what the causes are to try to see the fix. But that would be, I would recommend you save that for something if you're not part of your master plan, unless you really wanted a longer section. Most people do something like this, maybe get into the worst intersections, and then you would have a second accident analysis that you'd coordinate with police and things like that, if you really were thinking, "We want to put some money into safety of our roads." But right now, to be honest with you, this is, this is pretty good for your city streets. Most of your, most of the accidents and most of the bad roads are on UDOT roads. Like I say, with the exception of this little section of 48, there's a little worse than we would like to see. It's not black, I guess I could say that, but we don't like to see red either. So, that's pretty much the synopsis. I'm available, hopefully, the questions, and I'm available as long as you want. But that's where we are so far in terms of putting together that information for you. The next step would be to kind of refine it a little more in terms of input for you on the figures. What we really tried to do is get the figures ready for this meeting. That's why you'll see the report. You might have two sentences, and that's a placeholder for that, and then, you know, what the findings. But the maps are kind of what we thought was most important to convey the information to you. So, that's what we tried to get prepared as best as possible.
That's a good rundown.
Thank you. And then, things that we've missed that you might want to think about would be other things, because supplemental to things like this, which I don't necessarily think you want to do for the master plan, would be, do you have a sidewalk infill program? You know, you could make a graphic of that to say, if you wanted to prioritize. The main intent of this is you put this together and then if you do decide to do things like upclassify or rebuild roads, then the next step would be, how do you apply this to your capital improvements plan for your transportation program so that you can go out and ask for that money from what's at front? Is it, I want spot improvements because I'm more likely to get it or I want to save all of my political clout and have one big widening of forty-eight south or something, you know, type of thing?
Good discussion. Thank you. Well done.
Yeah, any, like I say, anything else or anything that pops into your mind, call me day or night, we were just talking, I work nights more than mornings, so.
So if you get emails at like two in the morning, Joe, it's just weird.
That's just, that's when I'm working. You won't get an email at seven-thirty in the morning, probably.
Thank you.
So you can see why we did this outside of council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Council Mayor, where do you want to go from here with the transportation plan so we can get it approved? You guys want to look at it? Do we want to get feedback to Jory and Joe and Ross? I mean, how do we want to, because at the end of the day, we've got to approve this plan, right?
Right. In some form, you would want to adopt it. Because then it's, as an adopted document, when you got, when you're working with UDOT on these different issues, you know, even if it's the great separation at Hinckley, hey, that's on our master plan. That helps them to also have ammunition because they don't want to make decisions for you any more than you want them to, but if you have a document saying, this was our vision, we adopted this, then they can go, oh, well, I know our road goes through your community. It's a win-win is what I'm saying, is if you can have that because you come together as a team.
So can we adopt this on November twentieth? I mean, that gives you three weeks to look at it. If you have any questions.
It's a good baseline information and gives us a starting point to be able to plug in future.
I'm thinking of Joe and Amy here, their one caveat is if we get some feedback quickly, then maybe, but if it takes a while to get feedback, then it'll be hard to make the adjustments.
So depending on, you don't want something draft forever, but you could adopt it as a draft recommendation so that, I think that gives you the same ability to say, well, here's where we are, we're in the process of updating it type of thing.
I mean, I don't think there's a lot of feedback that, I think you've covered quite a bit of stuff. I think a lot of stuff that I'm thinking of is, I wish it was a little bit more updated with some of the current numbers. That's the one thing I think we were all kind of concerned about sitting here, but I know that that's going to take time and we're just going to have to do, you know, have, take the time to do that, but we could adopt it as it is without, I think they've covered it quite a bit.
Joy, I think it's okay, we just said adopt it for next meeting if somebody has really something.
Yeah, I don't know much feedback.
If the council has an option, give the information to Jason within a week.
I'd get it to.
And then they give us two weeks to.
You okay with that, Amy? You had a smile back there like, I don't know.
I was just thinking, I have to do all this.
Is that, how do you get the credit?
I do get the credit.
Yeah, I think to Carlton's point, I don't think there will be any change.
I don't think she's going to get much.
I think my biggest concern looking at what your base costs are is kind of the final classifications for forty-eighth and forty-eighth. Apparently we don't have those roads upside.
I'm sorry, this.
If that's a, if you are going to decide to take those from three length to five length facilities. I think that would be the only thing I saw as an actual decision that you guys need to make before we can move forward, so.
You're right, there was one, but I felt like the big, big.
So Council, you got a week to put your comments into Jason and then that'll give you two weeks to finish this before we have to go through the approval process. You okay with that?
Yes, I'm out of the country the next two weeks, starting Friday, but I will have my phone and email and like I say, Amy does all the work, so. So just to finish real quick, those traffic circles that we were talking about, this is like a finished one on a, on what we would call collector in Salt Lake, same width as the road that we're talking about. Obviously, the tree canopy is a little bit better developed than our fifty-seventh, but this is kind of what it looks like where essentially, alls you're trying to do is get rid of that straight shot. Does that mean you won't have any hits? No, you may have hits, right?
It'll be around.
Yeah, but the idea is that you people have to deflect around it and because you put it in the intersection, they have more than enough room to do that for your fire trucks and your snow piles, they haven't had any issues with those things because again, the travel path is, is the same. Some people try to equate these to roundabouts and say, but I can't do a U-turn. I guarantee you're not doing a U-turn in this intersection.
Six November, Jason. We'll have the comments due by the sixth of November.
Yeah, everybody here with that, comments by November sixth? Comments by November sixth?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for, thanks for letting me take all the time too.
It was almost all the way to the bottom, fifty-seven hundred, the north side.
Joe, what else is yours up here?
So then, actually, I have all of mine now. The rest is yours.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it.
Yeah, so there's one in the cul-de-sac above me right by Brad Hill.
Okay, Andy?
Is everybody grabbing whatever drinks they need?
They can go on the fly.
And I think they do.
And that natural curve in the road.
Carlton's taking our last one, but we still aren't.
Okay, listen up.
I'm wondering if they have Carlton put on it, so it shined it into the backyard, but it shined on the curve.
I don't get it. Do you want more of that?
Whatever we got.
Ross, you're right.
So as Carlton shows, like, that's what makes the council understand, this really is a council issue.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So if we wanted.
I'm okay.
I just saw him out and did it after some water.
Oh, yeah, I was just thinking, no, I was just thinking, what are my choices like?
There you go.
Now that I'm over here.
It feels right.
Of course, if you look at this, Travis.
Long Parson Bay, two individual stranding, large walkovers out on Tarpon Unit Day, ten foot wheelboat, it's a light road with western, wet. Should we do it?
Yeah, let's go. Carlton will be back.
Two duck hunters stuck out.
Yeah, we can wait.
Yep.
Let me just take a seat though. I'm standing, I don't know how Joe stood for two hours.
And for the rest of the story.
What's that doing? Okay, well, just Carlton will be here in a minute.
Carlton's here.
Oh, there she is. Okay, good. Once a year, we do the training on the Open and Public Meetings Act. And so what I've done, in the past, you've had a copy of the state statute on that. It's pretty, pretty long and difficult to read, so what I did for you is I put together a synopsis of this that hopefully is in English and it'll give you a little better, better understanding, so you could keep that around if you have any questions, you can always refer to that. So what I want to do here is I want to go through this and we can go through it pretty quick. I know we've got a lot of things to cover tonight, but this was an act that was created by the state legislature and the primary purpose is they want the councils to do their deliberations and take their actions in, in the open rather than behind the scenes. So when does it apply? It applies when the council convenes with a quorum present for the purpose of discussing and receiving comments or acting on matters where the council has jurisdiction or advisory power on. It applies to our work sessions, executive sessions, planning commission and committees, but it doesn't apply to committees if we don't have a quorum. So you notice with our, our committees that we have, Arts Council, Economic Development, Beautification Committees, all of those were fine. We don't have to give public notice or anything like that and we don't have to worry about that because we don't have a quorum in those meetings, so. And we know that a quorum for a city our size is more than two council members, so you can have two council members on these committees and you can have the mayor also because he isn't counted towards a quorum because he doesn't have voting power. Doesn't apply to chance meetings, social gatherings, doesn't apply to any of those committees that I've mentioned because basically they provide recommendations. It also doesn't apply to any conferences, seminars, Roy Days, those type of events. When we get together for a Christmas party, doesn't apply in those situations. The rule is that these meetings will be open to public whenever you have a quorum, so there are certain exceptions, but what does it tell us when we have to have a, what do we have to do for those meetings? We have to have that twenty-four hour notice given to the standard and posted and put on the state website anytime that we're going to have a meeting. Now, and that fits especially tonight for like a special meeting. Now, for all of our other regularly scheduled meetings, we still have a twenty-four hour notice, but in addition to that twenty-four hour notice, we have to publish once a year our yearly meeting schedule, so. And then if there's an emergency meeting and those emergency meetings, it's just whatever notice is reasonable and practical under its circumstances. If it is one of those meetings, so we've got to give the notice, we have to have written minutes taken at those meetings and the meetings have to be recorded and we have to make sure that they're open to the public. If we don't have a quorum though, that's not required. Now, the exceptions to the open meetings are the times when we can close a meeting, we've been through these before, but I'll go really quick. Character incompetency or the health, physical or mental health of an individual. Collective bargaining, we don't run into that. I don't know how they would treat salaries though. We don't have collective bargaining here, but it's always a question if we could discuss salaries or salary surveys in a closed meeting. I don't know. Purchase and sale of property, whenever we have deals that we're looking at, under those circumstances, we can always have a closed meeting and have those discussions. Deployment of security devices fits there. If we're having investigative proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct, then at those times, we can also meet in private. Review of ethics complaints, typically, we have a different ethics process. This was specified in the state. I don't necessarily know if it applies to municipalities, but it could. Now, even though there's these exceptions to open meeting rule where you can have a closed meeting, we don't have to. The topics in there, if we don't want to, we don't really have to have them closed, but typically, I think we would always want to have those closed, so. But sometimes there might be a real estate sale or some kind of transaction there, we don't have to go into a closed meeting if we don't want to. If we do have a closed meeting, there are certain requirements. We have to have roll call, but it has to be in an open meeting, so that's one of the reasons why tonight, instead of having a work session, we had, we had to have a special meeting, an open meeting where during that open meeting, we take a roll call vote and we need two-thirds of the members to vote in favor of that vote and we have to state the reason why we're closing the meeting and the location of where the meeting is at, that has to be a part of that motion. At the meeting, there are certain rules that are required. Typically, they have to be recorded and minutes taken, which date, time, place, and names of all council members who are present. We also have to have the name of who isn't present and then anybody else that's present at that meeting. Recordings and minutes though, if we're talking about character incompetency or security devices, we don't have to record those. And under those circumstances, the mayor needs to sign an affidavit saying that it was for character incompetency or for deployment of security devices. Discussions in our closed meetings have to be limited to the purpose why we're in that closed meeting, so we can't be discussing other types of topics in there. Ordinances, regulations, contracts can't be approved at a closed meeting and we can't interview people applying for elected positions in a closed meeting. Now, sometimes in those closed meetings, when we might make a decision on a hiring decision or whatever, what we do is there's, it's been determined that as long as we announce that decision in a formal public meeting, then that's okay. So typically, that's what we'll do, we'll say, this is, this is what our decision is, then we'll go out, we'll make that announcement in a public meeting, either that day or sometime in the future. If there's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, a private citizen who's been wrong can file an action anytime within ninety days. If it deals with a bond, it's within thirty days. These can be done by citizens. If we are found in violation, we could be responsible for court costs and attorney's fees also with that. The, there's also action that can be taken because it is a class missed, class B misdemeanor for any violations too, that action can be taken by our county attorney or the attorney general's office. On disclosure of information, the topics that we may discuss in a closed meeting could actually be a criminal violation because there's the grandma statute that says that everything, any records of those meetings are protected records, so if we disclose that without a court order, we could have a grandma violation which could be criminally prosecuted. On the other areas where we don't have a record, there could be an ethics violation under the municipal officers and employees ethics act, so that's something to always keep in mind. With open meetings too, y'all know we can do electronic meetings, we've done that before, the notice is a little different for that. We do need you to let us know three days in advance at least before that and then we have to send a notice to the, our usual notices, but we have to mention that it's an electronic meeting, we have to say where the place is that we're going, our anchor location, I believe is what they call it, so we have to identify that too. And that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to go over that.
Is there something that I can get? Do you like marking this down anywhere that we have participated in this and?
Certificate of completion.
Yeah, certificate.
No, no, we don't have anything like that, but we have a record in case we, well, go ahead.
So I got an email the other day from the trust, I believe, asking if we completed it, so I'll send an email saying that we.
So I need it for the mosquito abatement board?
Oh, I can bring.
I have to complete it.
See, Ermgard never had us do anything like that.
I don't look up and see if I can find some.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, the agenda would count, so.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Excellent. Good one of the year. Okay, Jason?
Hey.
I'm an extra agenda.
Jason, no.
She's got one.
I'm reading this, treat or treat.
Yeah.
I wonder if I need it. Jason, sign it.
I just took a picture of a text he sent me and just sent it to Ross and asked if we should do it. Looks like the star of the table in his backyard, Ross wants to know if they can be shielded this off the light.
Okay, this is our last presentation before we adjourn to go into a closed door session. So the end of August, our salary survey that we did was complete. This is the salary survey that was a third-party independent firm that come and did it. So we have done it and if you guys remember, we looked at, a couple years ago, we were talking about doing once, one department or two departments, one year, looking at their, their salaries, yeah.
Do different ones over three.
Yeah, three different locations.
We haven't really discussed that, we haven't really talked about it, but that's something that we can discuss. So this is going to really be an open discussion for mayor and council. So cost of living adjustment, you guys know this is our second year in the merit system, but a merit system doesn't really allow for a COLA unless every few years you go out and you look at where are we at competitive with other agencies? Are we, are we low? Are we not looking at the adjustments and where we're at? We are low. So that brings a whole new different dynamics to the, to the merit system and remember, our main goal is to sustain what we currently have in place with the merit systems, but if we're looking at job descriptions and we're looking with people in those job descriptions that kind of half match, half don't, and they're not competitive, then we're going to have to look at that. So COLA is just a cost of living adjustment. The last time we did a COLA was three years ago. So in that last three years, other cities, other municipalities have reviewed and raised their minimums and their maximums in certain classifications. For example, finance department. In the finance department, other cities have calculated their adjustments and raised their, their bottom and their top. We have stayed the same for three years.
And I might add that when you, when you take a salary survey against other agencies and you're consistent with the fact, you're basically doing a COLA and averaging everybody else's COLA and just giving us the average of everybody else.
So a COLA raises the beginning and the ending.
Didn't that happen with our, with our merit, with the steps that we put in place? Didn't that happen with our, with our merit, with the steps that we put in place? Wasn't the, the lowers and the hires adjusted when we put that in place two years ago?
So what we did was we fixed the compression part.
Right.
So that was moving people within their pay scale and not adjusting their pay scale?
It wasn't. We didn't raise the bottom, and we didn't raise the top. We just looked at people and said.
Adjusted in the middle.
Yes, can we do an 80% so we can fix the compression? Okay, merit system. Like I said earlier, we, the sustainability of our current merit system is one of our main priorities. We want to keep that going. The merit system alone does not allow for COLA adjustments. They're completely separate. So the merit system, we, we need to give it some time to allow people to move up in their ranks. I get that part. But we're going to have to look at some type of, some type of a COLA. I know with Jeff and I know the fire department, not singling them out because Matt and I firmly and strongly believe that this is a city issue and that we need to try to take care of all the city employees best we can. I do know, and I really, really tried super hard not to give the fire department any special things. I know Jeff has felt it. I know he's had some arguments with me in the past about, hey, you know, we're having issues, and I, and I get it, but I'm trying to look at this collectively, citywide, but.
Wasn't the police department having similar, I mean, public safety seems to be where we're bleeding the most.
Yeah, and Jeff's in that spot right now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand up for him and say, I get it. You're gonna have to make some decisions, so, but they are bleeding right now, so.
I think they lost 11 this year, but they're getting a really good one.
Well, I don't know.
And another one lost, another one's going next month. We're gonna just bypass that whole conversation. Another one is being lost next month.
How many have they lost?
11.
Well, this year.
We're losing one more.
Like what year before? Like comparatively. Jeff, so what's an average that you've lost in the past years?
So in the past years, it hasn't, this has been bad.
So like one or two?
Not even that, yeah. So the last year, only made retirement or moving. So last year, we lost, well, technically, I got, so I got one leaving again in December, not including Ron. One of my paramedics is leaving. One of my guys have come, come back, has left twice, has left, come back, and has left to go to the police department, so.
So we thought that, we thought that the merit system was going to hold them better?
So let me, let me just touch on that, because after I say he's bleeding, I'll also say on the flip side, we need to give this merit system a chance to work, and it will work. But what we're losing, we're not losing your six, seven, eight, nine-year guys. You're losing your one, two, and three-year guys that we just can't keep, that are just chasing the almighty dollar. This merit system, and like I said in this slide, is one of our main priorities. We need to keep that merit system going the very best we can because, especially with public safety, the 3.75%, they go up every year. Eventually, our whole goal is to handcuff them, right? We want to make them feel like, gosh, we, we can't go anywhere because we're at wage, and we're like, ah. But we're, we're struggling a little bit with that, too, but, so. Okay, like I said, we had a third party complete it now. This company really looked at our job descriptions a lot, and they based our salary survey off of a job description and not necessarily saying, okay, Riverdale's prosecuting attorney is this range and this range, and here's Roy, this range to this range. They looked at the job description to determine what was written in our job description is how they base the money off of, which you can look at it two ways, because if we don't have a job description written as well as Riverdale's, but the, but they do exactly.
I was gonna say, when was the last time our job descriptions were reviewed?
That was part of the process, is that we had employees take a look at the job descriptions.
This year?
And then he also met with, like, an employee in each job, job description. Part of the, part of the analytics was, is they did a regression analyst to where they take multiple factors. So yes, they go in like Jason was saying, and rate each job description upon other people. They also put into other people's wages from other surrounding agencies. But the regression results just doesn't mean that if you have, you know, three different numbers from three different cities, that you're just going to take the, the average of it. It kind of merges everybody as the city in a whole, so everything correlates together. So if you have an attorney that's going to be higher, somebody with an entry level lower. And it takes into consideration these other, these other analytics. He also built a tool to say we can add in or take out cities that we do or don't like. So when we first got the, the survey back, it has Salt Lake City in it, which is quite high, Sandy City, and all these cities that we don't feel like we need to compare ourselves directly to, so we can minimize to where we want to look at as well. But being said, saying that, they provided us a tool that we can, can alter, and there needs to be some discretion upon management and upon staff to come up with those numbers as well.
So what we want to do is we want to come up with a plan and, and have you guys, our goal is January 1st, which is a mid-year budget, to look at what it's going to be mid-year budget, what can we do, and how do you guys want to best do it? What we want to do is we want to take their independent study, and then also all these cities put into a database, a statewide database, all of their employees' classifications and their salary ranges. So if we take those cities that we want to be competitive to, which we kind of already have selected those, which is not including your Salt Lakes and your big cities, but we want to be competitive with maybe Cache Valley, Box Elder County, Weber County, and Davis County, our agencies right next to us, that's what, that's who we want to be competitive with, knowing that we can't be competitive with your Salt Lake Valley, which is totally understandable.
What about Ogden?
Yeah, yeah, part of Weber County. So we want to take all those, look at them, and we kind of have done that a little bit, and in most areas in the city, we are on the low side. So that comes to the next one, which is going to be, it's a debatable, it's a, it's, these are debatable. So here's a couple possible solutions. The first one, take employees that are not in the new pay range and move them up to the new minimums, and we want to keep the 50% spread. So how, what, what do I mean by keep the 50% spread? Our minimum salaries and our maximum salaries has a 50% spread. We've always, for the history of the city, have always had a 50% spread.
Jason, I got a question. Are you talking every employee or just those job classifications? You're going to expose to do everything?
I'm getting there. That, that's the two issues. So the one issue is this, and I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna pick on the fire department for a second. So two solutions that you could do. So the paramedic salaries comparable to the other areas are low, okay? So let's say, just for example, it's, we're two bucks an hour low, okay? So does that mean if we raise the bottom up by the two bucks an hour, let's say it's at 16 bucks an hour, and it's got to go to 18 bucks an hour? And you have a five-year guy, you have a one-year guy, a five-year guy, and a 10-year guy. Well, the one-year guy isn't to the new minimum, but the five-year guy already is, and obviously, the 10-year guy is because they have tenure, and they're getting the 3.75% merits. So do you just give the first guy that's not in the minimum up to the minimum? Or do you give all of the employees up however much he went up, so you're eliminating compression? Does that make sense? Okay, so the, so the current salary is $15 an hour.
Where's my graph?
Yeah, it's 15 bucks an hour, but the new salary after our salary survey is 17. So we now are going to take it to 17 bucks an hour. But your one-year guy isn't to the 17, so if you raise it to 17, he's going to go to 17. But do you do anything with the five-year guy, and do you do anything with the 10-year guy?
Because they've already hit the minimum.
They've already hit it, but you've compressed them just a little bit. So do you give this guy two bucks, too, and this guy two bucks? If you do that citywide, we're going to be about $300,000 to adjust that.
So the issue, and I'm going to jump in on this.
Go, go for it.
I've done a lot of work on this, and kind of give my feedback with it, just because I'm bleeding so bad. And I, I do have some numbers that I'm happy to share once Jason's done, but the problem with that is if you raise the bottom end and you raise the top end, we, we adjust the whole 50% spread. Well, the guy that's a step five, and you adjust the whole spread, is no longer a step five if you don't adjust him to a step five. If not, that person's actually going to drop to a step four or even lower. So the right thing would, I don't, I, I don't think we have the money, and I wouldn't expect us to move somebody that's a step three and supposed to be a step five. That's in the past. We fixed it. My guys are just going to have to deal with that, and that's something we're going to have to deal with within our own departments. But if we make an adjustment to the pay scale, and I already have a step five guy, I, I am pushing that that step five guy keeps where he's, where he or she is at. So if he's currently a step five, we adjust the bottom end and the top end of the 50% spread. The five-year guy increases by a quarter an hour. To keep him or her at a step five, they would have to increase.
Instead of dropping him to a step four?
Instead of dropping him to a four, then they would stay a step five. So you would have to increase them. Now, it all depends on, I've worked with Matt and Jason on some numbers, but it all depends, for my department, it would all depend on what the new minimum was and the maximum was, on what that amount would be. But I have put together some numbers that I'm happy to share to kind of help with my end, because I have been bleeding a little bit, so. But that's kind of my input and my kind of thoughts on that, just a little bit.
Good. To kind of follow up with that, too, is that's one of the problems that we had when we fixed it with the compression three years ago. That's what we were trying to fix, is to separate employees. I think it, right, right now, what it's coming down to is, yeah, we love that idea, and we hate to, to enter that realm again, but do we have the money for it? Because if we, if we, anything that you add this year into wages is going to carry over to next year. And that's the biggest concern, and that's when Jason, at the very first of the conversation, said, number one, most important thing is the merit system, the pay, the, the thing that we have, the steps program that we have in place, because if we're not able to meet those needs, that's going to be far more detrimental than anything else. So I would say, my recommendation is, yeah, I would love to do it if we have the funding for it going forward.
Basically saying then, is to basically bring everybody up.
Correct.
And, and set a new minimum and adjust the top, and literally move everybody up that scale.
Yeah, because that's what a COLA does, so.
But the whole part you got, I'm not saying I'm upset about this, but we just did this for you six months ago, and now you're coming back to say it wasn't good enough, okay? But at the time, we should have took care of that, and we're still giving you 3.75 to keep the merit thing going, okay? We can barely afford that now. That's the reality of it. Anything, anything like this is doubling that, which we're not going to be able to afford.
That's we raised taxes.
Right. That's just a fact, okay? So I get that everybody's hurting, and I get the possibility of it, but come six months later and say, hey, guys, it's not good enough, it's kind of like, are you kidding me?
Yeah, I don't, and Dave, I don't know that we're saying it's not good enough, because obviously, the merit system is a very.
And the whole point of it was to, so we wouldn't have to do the COLAs again. I get the certain jobs we check out every three years, whatever it was, and see where we are from medium or not. Yeah, we haven't answered which jobs are taken care of yet, but.
So if every three, three years you look at it and.
That's certain jobs, not all jobs, is what it was supposed to be.
Yeah, so those certain jobs are low, what do we do? Do we, do we put them up? You know, be competitive with everybody else, and that's the whole point, I guess, of the COLA.
Well, I, I agree. Let's go back to, because we've been through this, and we really thought we hopefully fixed it, but it appears.
Well, I knew this was coming. I think other agencies are continuing to work with it. It's an ongoing battle.
And we're bumping against Salt Lake to basically provide five, six dollars.
Well, not even Salt Lake. We're bumping against.
Cash, Brigham, Brigham City.
Ogden, Riverdale, South.
South Ogden.
That they're all, if, we're not talking Salt Lake, because we cannot compete with Salt Lake, but our surrounding cities, we're now seeing our minimums low, and that's where we're, we're continuing to push.
The only way to do it is we take out capital improvements, and we drop some of the stuff that we.
There, hits becomes the question to fund. The question is, is either you raise, either you raise taxes to provide the revenue, or you cut expenses. So the question you have to ask is, instead of, what we're saying is we have a problem, you know? We've got to retain, okay, a solution with people. So now the question's going to be, do we raise taxes?
Yeah.
Or do we cut services?
Yeah, we gotta cut.
So let me.
Let me ask staff this. What's more important, your merit program, or would you rather go back to COLAs and come back to compression?
Well, I think the merit system's obviously better for us. I wouldn't want to see the merit system go, but let me just, let me just be the, let me just be the guy that says that we are a bedroom community, and in order to take care of needs, you have to raise taxes. You just do. I know Brian's not going to be happy with it. Joe's not going to be happy, but guess what? I don't know, honestly, if you really look at, how are you going to fix this without raising taxes?
The thing that we should have done, and it's the thing that, is that we should have been doing a truth in taxation, a small one every single year. You should do that just for, to compete with cost of living and to compete with services going up. We didn't for so many years. So then we went ahead and we did this huge jump to get us up to where we needed. Now do we look at, okay, every year, we do do a truth in taxation?
So we're in our second year of not raising taxes, and we're not raising them next year because it's an election year. So that's going to be three years, and we probably should have kept our current certified tax rate this year, which would have gave us about, not raised the taxes, just kept it, which would have gave us about $350,000, which would have covered this problem.
So, okay, let's go back to that comment. You're telling me if we fix the property tax rate, because it's going to adjust low.
Correct.
Fix it, the revenue will be 300, 350,000?
Yeah, if I would have kept it the same, if I would have kept the same certified tax rate with the increase in property values, we would have made about $350,000 by doing that.
That's only because of inflation, so next year, well, next year, we're still inflating.
But if they continue to rise next year, and the rate drops again because the property rates increase, we need to keep the certified tax rate the same, even if you just say, we're not raising it, we're keeping it the same, because all those people's taxes dropped.
And what was the reason why we didn't?
Knowledge?
Well.
Just knowledge?
Well, but not a going drop.
Right.
The fact that the rate dropped.
The rate dropped, but the taxes.
I took a $70,000 increase on my property value. And I'm telling you, I'm spending, okay, another $300 or $400 on property tax for keeping my, living in the same house, just going into this year. So the answer is, is that my property tax didn't drop, it actually went up. The rate went down. That's the only thing that adjusted, and it did, because the value of the properties all went up.
Right.
So if we don't raise taxes, it should stay relatively consistent with Troy City. There's going to be other agencies, like the school districts and, you know, any other person that raises taxes, that that's where your increase is going to come, month to month. But the theory behind it is it's not going to stay identical, because your value could go up more than your neighbor's value, or it could go down more than your neighbor's value, but the, the theory behind it is to keep things relatively consistent year after year if nobody does a truth in taxation.
Well, that's correct, but, but to go into a, to set the property tax, fix the property tax at the current rate, if you go into truth in taxation.
You have to, correct.
That's what Ogden did, and Ogden raised theirs 1.2 million this year.
Right.
By keeping the rate the same, not increasing it.
I understand.
Yeah.
So, but, but my comment would be is, it's still considered to be a truth in taxation.
Correct.
You can interpret that to be a taxing.
Yes, but like Carlene said, where we've kind of gone astray for years and years is not doing it. Even if you don't, and this is the Salt Lake class, that, at the Utah Leagues and Cities of Town, the lady said, even if you don't raise it, you should still do a truth in taxation, so everybody gets used to, our city's going to do a truth in taxation. They may raise it, they may not. May go up one percent, may go up five, but we don't ever want it to go up thirty-eight. But again, we're going to keep digging ourselves in a hole if we go now three or four more years without a truth in taxation, we're going to be in the same exact situation. I don't know any other way around it cuz sales tax isn't paying it. It's property tax and when we have the services that we have, that we provide to the community, it has to come from somewhere, you know?
So it comes back to my question, either raise taxes or cut services.
Right, right.
So the council has to make a choice. My concern is, is that you're gonna have a conversation in January. We're gonna ask, you're gonna ask a hard question as we do mid-year budgeting. How are we gonna come up with, if we go with the plan, a three hundred thousand dollar bill? That's the question in January.
Yeah, and that's.
You don't have to necessarily do this. We can say, okay, Jeff, I'm sorry.
First off, three hundred thousand is for everybody, not just employees, right? So we're not doing it.
And that's an estimated number too, yeah.
Right, we were supposed to just be doing.
A third.
A third, no, I remember that conversation. So why it's three hundred thousand, reality is a hundred thousand.
So we can, we can still do the third.
Yeah.
And that's, that's one of our, that's one of our possibilities. Another one is healthcare costs. We really seriously need to look at healthcare costs because our healthcare cost and our health insurance for our employees is premium. Premium. It costs us how much money in health insurance?
The city's paying about one point five million a year.
Didn't we take a point, a point, a five percent increase this last year that went to healthcare?
Correct, yes.
But they're still staying at the high premium. If you wanna drop the premium or go to the HSAs, the Health and Savings Plan, that you say, hey employees, here's, here's your five thousand for the year, you better spend it wisely. We could actually really cut that a lot and take the savings that we cut and put them into employee salaries and wages.
How we, do we.
Do they have an option to?
That's what I was gonna say.
No, they don't right now, so we only have traditional plans?
But can we give an option for an HSA and a traditional?
And would that be a savings cuz our young, our, our incoming guys, they really don't.
They just want an HSA.
Yeah, I think that's the point of this conversation is not necessarily to say we wanna slash health benefits, but we wanna look at compensation as a whole. And if we're losing those young guys that aren't utilizing this traditional plan, is it beneficial for the city to reallocate those funds and give it to tho, those people and those wages and not necessarily in their health?
And if they may be more disciplined with their healthcare costs if they know they're having to pay for it.
With forty employees, you really make that much of a savings?
With forty? That's actually a hundred, a hundred employees and it just depends on how deep we cut into it. Because we're paying out one point five million dollars a year, so there's a substantial cost there. When we're, when we're rating against other cities though, we're rating against only our salaries. So if we're rating only on that and then on top of that, we have this big traditional plan, then the city's overcompensating them if we're averaging everything out. So that's what we were saying is we wanna take a look at that as a whole and just to say, what is beneficial and why are the employees wanting to stay?
I knew we wanna establish a committee. Employees in the city from each department that have a say and get, take it back to their departments, get feedback and the committee meets to decide, where can we save on cost? And the mayor talked about cutting services. Matt and I have already, in the last three or four months, looked at alternative ways that we can continue this step plan and to be able to afford it. And we've actually done a pretty good job in just the last four months, so we do have a good start, but we're gonna have to address wages comparatively to other cities.
Wasn't your department head your natural committee anyway? I mean, they meet with you and you and they sit down and talk about wages, talk about this, and then they go back and talk to their people.
Yeah, but sometimes it may be nice to have the, the workers and not the department directors involved. They have a voice.
Let's talk about what third did you wanna get done this year?
Okay.
Who, what, what department? Probably the public works. So you, have you ever discussed it? What three, what third, what salary survey group were we talking about?
So, I don't know.
I'll just throw it out there, I hate to be the, but I'm, I'm bleeding right now. I, I feel I'm in the worst shape probably than anybody. I don't mean to give everybody problems or issues, but we've lost a lot. I don't know where it's gonna go. I have numbers, mid-budget, working with amount of numbers, I'm looking at about forty-one thousand dollars to fix my, my issue mid-budget year. Now, obviously, and that includes the thirty percent increase for the fringe benefit costs, actually just wages is about thirty-one thousand bucks. You have the thirty percent on for fringe benefits, I'm looking at forty-one thousand, right, right around forty-two thousand dollars. Next year though, like Matt said, you have to add that into next year, so my next year cost would actually double that amount. So to be transparent and fair, I, I understand that. This, the, the step plan was good, it fixed compression, but when we did the step plan, one of the things we didn't address was wages. So now, since we didn't address and fix the wages in the step plan, now we're losing the people to move into wages. And so, you know, like I said, I've lost twelve, I got eight guys on probation right now, I got most of my, twenty-three of my departments under five years of service. We're just in a, we're in a rough spot as far as specifically fire goes, I can't speak for any department head, but I understand the issue and money, but if we don't look at the way, take a serious look in wages and where we wanna kinda look at that, we're just gonna continue to bleed.
So can we do like three departments?
So, so let me, let me ask about Jeff. Jeff said it'd be about forty-one thousand, but it's gonna double so it'd go up to eighty-two thousand?
Just for next year.
Just for him.
Then you look, yeah, then next year you're looking at another third.
But how appealing is that, that, that healthcare cost? Cuz if it's not really appealing and they're not coming or staying with the department because they have good insurance, then that's a really obvious way to me to cut. That's what happens in my, in my work situation is my insurance is probably more than, I mean, it's less than half as good as when I started. I, I don't get nearly the insurance coverage I got when I first became employed.
I mean, that's kinda fantasy. Young single guys can say, yeah, I don't need it, got a young family of kids, you can say, no, I need the full coverage.
If he really does, but then he has a choice to go with a high option, the premium.
Optantites that millennials.
The reason why at least three of us has been on this, we first start talking a couple of years ago, the said, let's bring all the merit pay and put that at the beginning of the fiscal year. And we paid all merit costs if they were eligible, right at the beginning of the year. Then we had to think, help me Jeff, there was a discussion that says, public safety had a problem because our retirement was sitting out at fifteen or seventeen years. We said, we gotta bring that down to twelve or thirteen. And so we basically said, do that, which means they can back out, they can actually kid out for a senior to twelve, thirteen. All that added money to this discussion. Now, the conversation is, public safety's back, I wouldn't be surprised, police is in the same boat, they're saying is, I'm losing people, I'm bleeding. And the reason why is because other fire departments, other police officer agencies are saying is, to compete with Roy over the last couple of years, I gotta raise up a little bit. So we have people, as we seen earlier, we had a, we had a police officer that was in Roy, left Roy, went to Clearfield or someplace in Davis County and came back because we can offer more pay. What's happening i- in our society is we're just basically comparing each other. And I'll offer, we'll fix the fire department, but next year, they're gonna have to go up there. The other city says, we gotta be competitive with Roy because it's taking our people and they've gotta raise theirs up. And, and the challenge we face is, is that we, it's not stopping.
But respectfully, what I'm saying is that if they're only comparing salaries, but what we're, where, where we're having to pay premium healthcare as well and they don't compare that, they're not thinking about that, they're not using that as a comparative.
You're asking, correct, but people don't look at the total cost of employment, which is what the challenge.
Though, a year from now, this is better and you're not gonna take it out on us again? And you're gonna take care of public safety a year from now again? You can't guarantee that you're not gonna have this again.
But my concern is, my concern Ross is this, here's my concern. I just did the, a little analysis of Bountiful. Bountiful is relatively compared to Roy City. If you look at quantity of people, it's about the same makeup demographics. Their city manager makes two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. How close are you to that one, Jason? Okay?
Long ways.
You're talking about a guy that runs the electric company up there, down in Bountiful, down there, that makes almost a quarter of a million dollars. I went, looked at your job and I looked at, in fact, do you want me to show you? Let me tell you what their council members make. Bev, Beth?
Beth.
Beth. Dave, you'll appreciate this comment. Beth makes twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, okay? That's what? Three times, four times what we're making and I won't even dare to tell you what the mayor makes.
What's their?
The point I wanna suggest is, if you're, if you're doing the demographics and you're basically saying is, one of the comparable cities in Davis County is Bountiful, ladies and gentlemen, we're in trouble. Because we're not generating enough revenue in the city to basically double all of our employees' rate, salaries. And yet, you go look at the numbers as I went through that thing and I'm telling you, it scared the snot out of me because that's the competitive problem we have. And by the way, Salt Lake provides our employees better than that. So there has to be a fundamental look about how we're going to address this issue. And, and by the way, it starts with us. Ideally, I'd like to say, okay, if it's only forty thousand dollars, Jeff, and we need to carve forty thousand dollars, then let's find forty thousand dollars to fix his problem. Remember that conversation when we had the police issue a long, a while ago? But it's not just his issue. You're gonna have, you're gonna have Carl in here saying is, I'm losing police officers and you've got to be worried about what's gonna happen with the rest of you. So this is a fundamental shift in terms of asking the question, what are we willing to do and what are we willing to stop doing? To have, make sure that we're in fact providing the service that our residents expect. That is the conversation's gonna have.
I think we're all on the same page. I don't thi, I think we all agree with the mayor that that's exactly the page, case. So I think what we need is, what are, we need to come up with the actual goals. What can we do? What are our numbers? And so that we can make this decision. Whether we're doing the.
Well, and that's why we're bringing it up today so we can kinda get some direction.
Yeah.
Cuz you guys, it's really, we're, we took our lead on this merit from you guys, the department directors, guys. This is what we thought we wanted as a city and from coming to you. This is still the number one important thing. If this is that, then we need to know we're gonna stick with this for everybody across the board, just like we set it up. And the reality is, you're not gonna get a COLA, you're not gonna get anything else unless the council's willing to raise taxes. That's the truth and the reality of it. I know it sucks, it's not a popular statement, but it's a fact. It's a fact. So you're gonna have to leave with, live with your bleeding. Maybe we can come up with little solutions here and there, maybe the insurance helps out a little bit to help somebody out, everybody else. But we're asking you, are you guys willing to stick it out or do you wanna get rid of it and go back to the good old days of compression?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get rid of the merit program. I think the merit program is a pretty powerful thing.
There's no great solution to it, if you wanna stick out what we committed to.
Can we change the cap out?
Deal with the bleeding, see if we can help or not.
Yeah, it's, I mean, a fifty percent spread is what we currently have and that's traditionally right about average. Um, some, some people have about a forty-six, I believe we used to have a forty-six before we did the step.
Our fifty percent spread is actually very competitive.
Yeah, it, it's pretty.
Our top out pay is not far off. It's just getting people through.
Through the steps.
Through the steps and that's why we create a step plan. So I think if we got rid of the step plan, I think that would be a major, major mistake.
So if you, you're saying forty-six might be a little closer, is four percent enough to leave the top and bring the bottom up four percent?
Yeah, we can do, we can do a lot of different things, you know, so that's kinda why we're here.
That was a topic that Jeff and I were just having today.
But whatever you adjust, brings back compression at some level.
Correct.
If you don't put everybody in that classification up, you know?
So if we, if we hit the bottom and push the bottom up, it compresses, if we leave the top the same, it'll compress everybody in the middle again.
Right.
Or if you put the top, if you put the bottom number up four percent, the top's gonna go up four percent. It's just taking those guys in between and moving them up four percent.
That's the three hundred thousand dollar cost.
Right.
Another thing, may I add, that initially when we did the three different sections, it was due to time constraints within the management services department. I also feel there's a need for funding because police, fire, parks and rec is general, is all out of the general fund and that's where we're having the, the greatest constraints at. The fire department makes up, you know, over a third of the general fund, the police department makes up over a third. So if you combine public safety, you're looking at, you know, seventy percent of the employees out of the general fund if you combine those two people together.
So you could break them up.
So you'd have to, you, yeah.
Fire one year, police another year.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting, yeah, exactly, so you'd have to.
Break up that, okay, break up the employee.
Yep.
I think, I think the salary survey discussion I had before was in anticipation that kind of idea was going to happen. We would be sitting down here at a third of the workforce and you'd have said a hundred thousand dollars and then how can we come up with a hundred thousand dollars? But I think.
Which we still can do that.
Well.
If that's what.
Yeah.
I have absolutely zero problem doing that. If we wanna come to a third and say, okay, public works, fire and admin services or whatever, we look at their stuff this year and next year you take parks and rec and you take police, whatever. Talked to Carl, I talked to him on the phone today, he's excused, he's in Denver on a, on a work, um, meeting, but he feels like right now his police department is in a good, is in a good way. He doesn't have a lot of issues with this police department and competitive salaries.
Chief deputy?
Yeah.
I, I, I think you gotta have a vision though, you gotta have a commitment to that vision. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, I, I, if I were Ross, I'd be, I'd be sitting on quicksand because he's saying, yeah, well, we gotta do that this year cuz we gotta take care of those guys, but.
And he for sure gonna take care of me.
And he's, he's just right, I mean, everybody here has extremely valuable people who do a good job. I know, and I mean, no disrespect when I say this, it, the natural reaction is public safety, public safety, but in administration and public works and parks and rec, that there's good people there that, that we have to make sure we take care of them as well. And I think that's all Ross was trying to say is, this cannot be a public safety only type conversation. You know, because we both, we all have great people that, that deserve the same opportunities.
Well, that's why we put the merit in place in Apple City.
Sure.
Okay, can you give us some numbers? If we do this plan, if we do plan A, we can come up with this, if we do plan B, we can come up with this.
Okay, so let's.
As long as we can.
Let's define plan A.
As soon, okay, as a council. We did the merit, we were gonna evaluate jobs every three years, so we'd pick a third, a third and a third. We do, we were going to go out and do a salary survey, if we were at the median point, great, no big deal. If it was off the median point, we'd find out how much a dollar value and then bring that back up, back to us. Say, you guys, we need this much money.
Okay.
And then we, as a council, would just figure out a way to see if we can make that happen.
Okay.
Is that, is that a real plan?
Okay, so, so let's stick with the original plan then. So why don't we set a date for November and we'll come to you with three departments and we'll come to you with numbers? Fair?
We only have the one meeting in November though.
Right, we can do it, yeah, or we can do it the first part.
And a cost analysis about the healthcare.
Yeah, yeah, no, we need to know what, if we did that, you know, that might.
I, I've, I've always thought healthcare's an interesting one and it's not my original idea, but, but there's other places. I mean, I, I think we do have good health insurance, but there's other places that pay people to not be on their health insurance. You know, and, and I, I don't, if we're truly looking at possible solutions and best ways to identify and find money, I, I don't know if it's doable, but if, for example, me and my wife, if I could get on her health insurance and Roy City said, hey, we pay twenty-two thousand dollars a year for you Travis, but you're on your wife's now, we're gonna let that corporate sector take care of this, here's whatever you threw me. And maybe, maybe you throw me two thousand dollars total for the year. Roy City saves nineteen thousand dollars on me. I realize it's also a very balancing act and, and we can't fall below a certain number or our rates grow exponentially. But, but if we're truly looking for solutions, I, I don't know why we don't look for solutions. And like I said, this is, this is somebody else's idea, not mine, but I think there's very apparent value to that.
So we've already, yeah, we've already looked at that possibility, and the possibility is, if, if we had 10 people do that, we've dropped out of the percentages and our rates would go sky high. And we have a lot of people.
Real 10 only?
We have, yeah, it's like, the large group is 100 people.
Yeah.
So the Jeff's company says, yeah, so, so we looked at it. So if we did that and we had 10 people in the city, have a spouse work, drop it, we paid them $1,000, well, now all of a sudden, our rates changed and now as a city, we're gonna spend way over the $1,000 that we gave these employees because the percentages are gonna go up.
And the other big factor too is utilization with insurance is because typically speaking, you're gonna have healthier individuals take advantage of that because they're going to get the, the money from it. And so the utilization is going to in, not necessarily increase, but you're gonna take the healthy people out of your plan. That's increasing all of your premiums.
Well, then the other answer, and this is, this is more, let's have, we have to have a serious conversation. So come back with some ideas. But the other thing is, is that, is that we've got a set amount of money between now and July. The question's going to be is, what are we willing to cut back in doing so that we can divert those funds, okay, to pay salaries? If Jeff is accurate, he's putting public safety in this community at risk if he doesn't have his organization staffed appropriately. So I'm not ready to tell the residents of Roy that you are now at risk for public safety because we're not, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. So what can we not do anymore to save money so we can make sure that the critical needs of the city are basically met? And if we're saying is, our people are most important, then I'm asking you is, then find $100,000, cut spending, whatever you gotta do, and say, that's where the money's going to be, and, and here's an option, council, will you agree? And we'll do a midterm budget adjustment and approve it.
So mayor, I, I agree with everything you said. There has to be a but, there just has to be. So we can, we can be frugal, 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 we can cut, 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 but on the other side, eventually, there has to be a raise taxes to help everything balance out.
Why don't we do that truth and taxation every year?
We have never in the past, we were, it was great, you know, running as city council and say, hey, haven't raised taxes in 15 years, here we go. And that's what kind of put us in where we're at now.
Political will to do it or not.
Yes. There's nothing to say that we can't start now and do that.
Brian, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm.
I think you need to do it every.
I'm gonna be the one that's gonna be punished. But you can do it, you can, there is another way. I know everybody in this room is of the mindset that there's no other way. But you could bring yourselves' tax revenues up in one year to pay for that number he just shared, by landing two or three different businesses. That's it. And that's, that's, I know, but here's the deal. Over $2 million that sits in a fund that nobody can use. The only thing we can use it for is to build the city's economy. So help me figure out a way to get businesses in here on these vacant parcels and let's do it the way that Leighton does it.
I agree with you, Brian, and you've called every business in Utah and they're not beating down our door to come here. And we don't own the property, so we're at the leisures of the Woodberries, the Pentads, to develop their property. And God bless Woodberry, they'd rather leave vacant, building vacant than put something in that made us money. So I hear where you're coming from, you're beating the streets harder than anybody, but I don't see that they're beating our doors down.
No.
Roy, Roy has this complex for some reason that's not, they'd rather go to Riverdale or Clinton or Leighton, so what are we gonna do to make the city more appealing to get these people? We could call the whole world, but if we don't have nothing to offer them?
Let's put the sales tax to a two-year plan. And if it's not generating more money and we're still lowering wages and we're still losing people, we're going to have to do a truth and taxation. That, you guys can steer away from it all you want, it's going to have to come to fruition.
And a lot of cities, and a lot of cities are actually heading that way to do that every single year now.
So unless you land a Home Depot or a Super Walmart, it's gonna bring in a half million dollars in sales tax, that's really the only way, if you bring in a large box. If you bring in a little mom and pop grocery store or a little restaurant, we may get $5,000, $1,000, $20,000 a year in sales tax with the way that the sales tax is appropriated. So unless you land a Home Depot, all these little mom and pop.
But you've got, you've, you've got this money.
Right.
Just, they just sit. And we can't use it. You can't use it and he can't use it. And it's the craziest thing, you go through all the budgets and you go, well, jeez, I just found $2 million. Wonder who that helped? And it gets to help nobody except for us to bring business in. You know what, I've, I just spent six months on a deal, six freaking months, and it took us that long to bring in one cafe. Not because they didn't want to be here, but because of all the entanglements that they had to go through to get here. And so I'm telling you, it can work. Don't tell me it can't because I covered Leighton, I covered Clinton, and that is what they put in place. And yeah, there was growing pains and it didn't come overnight, but now look. And I'm just telling you, it can, there's, you know, or it can be a mix. But man, going out and asking the people for more tax money, you've got four referendums on the November ballot that if they pass, everybody in this room will be paying at least $100 more a year in taxes. For services, they probably don't even receive.
Okay, we'll bring back a plan for November on three.
Let's talk about the certified tax rate again. So if we left it the same, we bring it back to what it was, what's that hurt the pocketbook for your, as average citizen? Well, see, like Mayor Dandway suggested, when his house went up $70,000, if you leave that the same, you're gonna pay that much more. And so really, they take down that certified rate to equal the dollars would stay consistent. So if you say a truth and taxation, really, you're gonna take more money from the citizens by increasing the rate, but your rate itself does not change. So your, your house value could be valued at 300,000 at the 55, and then take the 55%.
Just because our certified tax rate brings us in this dollar amount. And if we want to stay at that dollar amount, we need to keep that rate.
Or, or no, the dollar amount would change if we keep that.
Because the values went up.
Correct, yep.
Well, the good news is their value went up.
Yeah. And, and they're saying they're probably gonna go up again.
But they still have more, they have more assets than they've ever had.
They have more equity in their home and they just paid more money for that equity.
So thank goodness my rate went up.
Yeah, cause it's.
I mean, that's what I would be thinking is.
Okay, so let's go back to what the mayor said or stated. We have our plan, we pick the three, you get some money values, you bring back ideas.
Perfect.
Help with the cost, tax rate, whatever else you can do.
Okay, we can do that.
My thing about picking the three is, is you've got to guarantee the other two thirds of the year is coming, a year and another year.
That's what I said, you gotta have a vision.
And we've gotta have, if we do that with that third, we have to have that plus the next three.
I mean, we can't do a third this year and then the next third's thinking they're gonna get it next year and then go to them and say, well, sorry.
With the understanding.
Tax income sucks this year.
Your minimum salary range is you guys, or where you're at. That's just the reality, that's what the deal was.
I think that is too, is there's a conception that, or perception.
I know.
That if we do a salary survey, everything increases, but it could not, it might not, it might.
Right, yeah.
I just, I think it'd be good if at some point in that process, you've got some comparable data between cities. I'd like to kind of get an idea what cities you're doing a comparable data to.
We have, that's really simple. We'll get it, we'll get it too.
The program you have will help us to understand where you're looking. I will just indicate, as I was alluded to, further south, it's gonna be very, very more competitive.
Right.
A little more difficult to be competitive because of the, they're so close to Salt Lake.
Yep, sounds good.
Yeah, and, and home values as well, because when you say the, the tax rate versus the home value, you still have those.
You gotta do a comparative home value.
Right, right.
Yeah, my, my house is not comparable to somebody in Bountiful.
Right, yeah, home rate is right.
Is there anything else? Okay, council, any questions for staff? Okay, I just, I need to go to have a motion to do a closed-door meeting and discuss the character of professional, professional competency or physical mental health of an individual's. Do we have a motion? You got a closed-door? Got a motion?
Yep, let's throw in that motion, we gotta say where it's gonna be at.
Yes, that's right, it's gonna be upstairs in the administrative conference room.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I need a second. There's a roll call vote.